All right, let's bring to order the Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, meeting of the Middleton Select Board here at Fuller Meadow Elementary School. Reminder to everyone, this meeting, as always, is being recorded audio and visually, as well as being broadcast live. First item of business will be the reading and discussion of warrant number 2519 and Facilities Project 57. Please just...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before us, we have warrant 2519 dated March 20th, 2025. On the payroll side of things totaling in at $836,000. To call out a few high-level items there, there's about $7,600 for the Public Health Excellence Grant, PHE grant. Thank you, as always, to Jackie for her work on that and collaborating with Boxer and Topsfield. We have just under $18,000 in overtime for the fire department, part of that reflecting the brief, smaller brush fire that we saw that was reported, as well as about $10,000 in overtime for the police department, as we have been committed throughout the year just continuing to call out those numbers as we look at a potential more than likely override for public safety services in the upcoming fiscal year. On the bills payable side of things, about $1.7 million or so, a few things, $35,000 under accounting for munis support, about $32,000 under the DPW for landfill monitoring, an obligation that we continue to commit to. For schools and treasure alliance, you'll see about $220,000 for health insurance premiums and $154,000 respectively, as well as $252,000. And assessment for project side of things, FP 57 totaling in at $74,998, about $60,000 or so of that as construction services, the other soft costs. And I think, given the, within the snapshot of time, I'm not so sure it's worth providing a municipal campus update, other than we remain on time and under budget, so.
Oh, good news.
You keep telling us there'll be a big facilities warrants.
Yeah, coming, yeah, and I keep looking, yeah.
Are you paying it out of your own pocket?
I assure you I'm not, but I would assume after the something pretty large will slide through.
April 1st, you'll see a very significant one.
It's coming, Costa.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept warrant 2519 as presented and the Facilities Project warrant FP 57 as presented.
Second.
Your motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, passing unanimously. Thank you. We have, at occasions, you look at the open session minutes for March 4th, 2025, as well as the executive session of March 4th, 2025. Are there any questions or anything on those?
I did not.
I'll move to accept both as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, passing unanimously. Next, if we could have Justin give us the town administrator update and report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A dozen or so items to touch on throughout town. I completed the advanced topics course for the Mass IGO training, which officially finishes my continuing education credits for the MCPPO program, so they really kind of ramped that up over the past few years, so.
It's a painful process.
It's tough, but it is done for three years, so that's a good thing. As of last Thursday, the water mains are fully charged and in service on Essex to Bush and Liberty, and a huge kudos to the DPW team. It was a tough time of year to complete that type of job, and they did it well, and they stayed on budget, so they should be commended for that. I did see on social media some folks griping in so many words, but expressing their frustrations at the state of the road, and we just want to reiterate like we have in previous meetings that that's temp paving. They want to allow some time for the trench to settle. Once the trench settles, they're going to roll through and they will pave it. So rest assured, folks on Essex to Bush and Liberty, we will take care of you, and we're not going to leave it like that.
So, Justin, I know during one of the budget hearings, the GPW director stated that it may happen sometime late summer. Is there going to be any additional patching that will happen prior to then? Because there are a couple of areas that have settled, because it's going to settle, and it's especially on some areas of Essex. Will any of that be patched again, or is it going to wait until late summer, early fall?
We will do some temp patching between now and that point, especially coming out of plow season. So when we roll through and do that, they drive around town and patch things up, we'll make sure they give extra care to that area, just so people aren't left in the lurch for three or four months, because we would like to wait until pretty much the end of, right up until they close the plants, pretty much.
Yeah, makes sense to let that settle, I agree.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
I will be sitting down with our police chief and police captain sometime next week to review speed data for Central Street. That was something that we had committed to way back in the fall, going into the winter, so we did capture data there before snow season really started in earnest, took a little break. And then it's my understanding either this week or early next week, the sign is out and we'll be coming back in to get our last batch of data. So we'll review that internally and then come back around, have a conversation with the neighborhood, and just follow up with them and see how they settled into the infrastructure changes that we had done in the fall. In part, we wanted them to have an opportunity to see how things felt in the winter, we wanted to see how the plows did in the winter, and so now we're making good on that commitment. So we'll close the loop on that. The MSBA has assigned an OPM, an architect, for the Fuller Meadow roof here in this building, so that's a huge step in this process, and I was actually happy to see the OPM that was selected was Sochatac, who I've actually worked on several projects before in the past, and I know them to be an exceptionally good firm, so we lucked out with that one. And I'll continue to coordinate with the elementary schools on that. The left turn arrow at 114 and 62, we had previously mentioned, was approved. I did receive word upon following up with them that Mastot confirmed their receipt of a design, so they have a design in hand. They are going to install it in the spring, and the only real hang-up at this point is coordinating, or I guess what's going to dictate that going in is when they are going to do their line and lane striving, so that whatever they, when they put up the signal that the roadway corresponds with where the signal is. So that was great news to hear. Assistant Administrator Bresnahan and Conservation Director Kent joined the green belt folks to walk the back half of the golf course in preparation of the preservation restriction for that site. I believe that was, was that last week, early last week or the week before? It was a rainy and muddy day. I was originally going to go, and then I backed out, so thank you, Jackie.
She took one for the team.
Took one for the team, so in full recognition.
It's beautiful out there, it was worth it.
Yeah.
You missed out.
Well done. Tri-Town negotiations are ongoing, and we continue to meet biweekly. We were, we rotate where we are every other week, so we were at Howe Manning last week, and those conversations are going well. I have connected with a structural engineer to take a look at the existing fire station, a firm that I've worked previously on several projects, so they're just going to come in next week, take a look at it and give us an idea of what we would want to look at in terms of building out a scope. Potentially, we'll have them give us a proposal, but depending on the value of what that is, we may end up going through a competitive process, but it's at least a starting point to get a professional's opinion, and they come out for free, so we'll see how that works. I will be meeting with the town planner next week to discuss the scope of the northern corridor studies, so that's something we've talked a lot about, and I think in recognition of the fact that the planning board has a ton on their plate right now, we're looking at the full comprehensive zoning and some other initiatives. There's a potential that they may create some type of subcommittee or solicit input from the community. We had talked about from the jump that we wanted input, that we didn't want this done in a silo, and we wanted input from people that live, work, or own land or businesses in that area, so we can get input from them directly about what they'd like to see in that area, but also from the citizens in Middleton at large. So hopefully, we can cast a wide net and get a lot of different opinions on that. So we'll be meeting this week, and hopefully that'll roll out in the next couple of weeks. And then lastly, I joined Finance Director Wood and the Finance Committee at their meeting last night, and they'll be meeting one more time Monday, 7 o'clock next week, over Zoom, just to finalize any outstanding items relative to the budget, meeting with department heads, the schools will come in for that one, and just any last second things as we kind of inch towards the finish line here. And that's everything for now.
Thank you, Justin. Do you know where the use of the opioid settlement funds, what is happening with?
I can get you an update on that. They were getting a group together, right? But I don't know if they've come to a determination.
Yes, they meet regularly. There's a working group that's meeting every month. They have spent some of the funds.
Nark boxes.
Yes, Narcan boxes, public education through the Tri-Town Council, and a couple of other initiatives, including last September, we had our first-ever International Overdose Awareness Day that many of you may have seen with the purple flags on the Flint Public Library lawn, and I do know that they anticipate that event will happen again late summer.
Great, thank you. I have to point out, I know it goes along quietly over there out of our way, but thank you, Justin, thank you, Jackie, for the oversight on the municipal facilities complex, which is well under budget and on time, so thank you very much for that. Okay, do we have anyone here next for a public comment? No, the folks are here for something on the agenda. Okay, no one's here for public comment. Item number three, we're going to look to make an appointment on the Historical Commission for a Richard Androucci, and I believe that gentleman is here this evening, and if you want to come up and introduce yourself and let us give you much thanks for your interest in volunteering for this town.
I wasn't sure what you'd be asking or what you wanted to know.
I'm going to grill you.
You're going to get grilled for an hour.
Serious interview.
Thank you.
Very quick synopsis of some of the things I've done.
Thank you. I can distribute if you want to hop up to the mic.
Okay.
Watch your step.
I've lived in town a little over two years, and in the two years I've been here, both myself and my wife have tried to get involved in the community. And one of the first things we did was join Historical Society, and we've been to a number of meetings there, and we learned a lot about the town. There were talks by three people one night who had written books about Middleton, and they grew up in Middleton, what their experiences were like back then, and maybe it's how it's changed a lot now. It was very, they were very interesting, they were very comical, but they were very informative, so, and I've been going to the Historical Society meeting since. So we joined right soon after we got in town. Again, we wanted to become part of town. We wanted to say we're here as neighbors, and we want to get involved, and so that's what we've done. So in the past year, like in terms of volunteering, I volunteer at the trap house when it had open house. Both myself and my wife came, and we escorted people through the trap house. We get a 10-minute description of what was going on, and we were able to pass that along to the people, so I enjoyed that.
You did a very good job.
In a past life, I was a teacher, so it was not...
Once a teacher, always a teacher.
Always.
Always a teacher, and I was with my wife, she's more than I am, so I've done that. The other thing I've learned a lot about Middleton is I take Pike's hikes, so I've been doing that since I got here also. I like to walk, and when I first came here, I joined Pike's Friday morning hikes, and some of them were through downtown Middleton, and he gave a lot of information about some of the characters that lived here at various times. And one that stuck out to me was, I guess, the pastor of one of the churches, I guess, was a kind of a unique individual, a nice person, but flexible and so forth. So, and he pointed out a lot of things that were someplace that don't exist anymore. So, very interesting. One of the things I did too is, on Pike's hikes, I met Richard Gilman. He's a member of the Real Trail, and he talked about the Real Trail. So not this summer, but the summer before, I joined him pulling weeds out along the trail. Down at the, where the trail crosses Maple Street, the other side is Plax, and so for a number of months, Richard and I pulled weeds out from that area. So I've done a lot of volunteering in my life. For years, I worked at Frederick Lawrence Olmsted National Historic Site as a volunteer. I had an important job there. I was the receptionist. So after I finished working, I didn't want, you know, I wanted to do things easier. I was on, I lived in Boston, about a 15-minute walk from Fenway Park. It's an area called Ottawa Circle, and I was on the Ottawa Circle Neighborhood Association for several years. And basically, the thing I joined there for is, I was concerned about the neighborhood, and talk about building here, there, there were multimillion-dollar buildings going up, and all of those things could affect quality of life. So I joined that board and that group for quality life, to make sure the neighborhood maintained a quality of life. I worked at the, volunteered at Children's Hospital Yaki House. I don't know if you know what Yaki House is, okay? I found, my wife was volunteering at Children's Hospital, and came home one night with an article from the newspaper saying they were looking for volunteers. The Revolution Soccer Team had donated a greenhouse for the Children's Hospital, and no one was taking care of it. So she said, "Rich, would you like to do that?" So I said, "Sure." So I went down, and I started up for the next few years. I got the greenhouse going, I worked there, I got the plants going and so forth, and it brought me good joy, because at that place, it's the parents whose children are in, at Children's Hospital who are ill. So any little thing to make them feel better, I felt good when I get comments saying, parents that come through here, and they liked it. So I was doing that, and I, actually, I worked at Frederick Lawrence Olmsted National Historic Site in Brookline also. Oh, that's why I said I was, I was at the door. So I've done, I've done another volunteer things, and I said, "I like history. Whenever I travel, I'm usually interested in learning something." And both my wife and myself, when we go places, we're past the days of going to the beach and just lying down. We want to learn things as we go. So as you see there, we've been to, that's just a small portion of the different places we've gone through life, to talk about history, and we still do that now. Like I said, we've been at the USS Arizona's Memorial in Hawaii, the Statue of Liberty, we actually climbed up the Statue of Liberty, we've been to Normandy, we've been to Smithsonian Buildings and so forth, so I like history. I studied history when I was younger, so I thought the Historical Society might be a good fit for me.
Mr. Richard Androucci, you're hired.
Thank you.
All right. You've got some, obviously, you've got Ms. Cody behind you, which obviously lets us know.
Okay, thank you very much.
That you're well sorted. So, but before you step away, we'll make it official.
So I will make a motion to appoint Richard And...
Androucci.
Androucci of Rowell Lane to the Middleton Historical Commission for a term through June 30th, 2026.
I'll second.
And I'd also say thank you as a, so it's only been in town for two years, you leaned in pretty quickly, and I appreciate that. This, it's a great town, but it's made even better by its volunteers, and you'll be hearing later in our agenda as we start talking about our efforts to start planning for our big birthday anniversary of our 300th anniversary, so I think somebody with your experience may want to lean in again, but I thank you very much for serving us.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Richard.
Can I ask you?
I'm sorry, I'm motioning in a second, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you.
What kind of teacher were you? What subject?
I taught junior high math. And then I ended up being a guidance counselor in Canton, so I did that for a number of years. Then in 1981, you heard Proposition 2 and 1/2.
Yeah.
That was the end of my educational career, so then I had to go out and find new work. And for that, after that, I worked as a technical editor at an engineering firm, I was a computer programmer for years, I worked at State Street Bank in IT, I worked at Masco in IT, so I ended up having to change my career after I got laid off from there. But I was lucky, it was a good career to go into.
There you go, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you very much again.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, on an item number four, is a request for a Class 2 for the 2025 license renewal for Roberts Motor Group LLC.
Rick, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. Mr. Gobble recused himself, we have the items in our packet.
Mr. Chairman, I went through the application, and I would like to make a motion to renew the license for Roberts, Roberts Motor Group, which is doing business at Five Forms Way, Unit Number 2.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second.
You have motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Passes. Item number five, a seasonal annual, seasonal liquor license renewals and change of manager. I guess we can do them together, but first is for the Ferncroft Country Club doing business as the Halfway House, it's actually on the golf course, Halfway House and Snack Bar, and also the Ferncroft Country Club doing business as the Members Lounge. We have those items in our packet, it appears...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the two seasonal liquor licenses for the Ferncroft Country Club doing business as the Halfway House and Snack Bar, and the Ferncroft Country Club doing business as the Members Lounge.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None, passing unanimously.
Mr. Chair, we do need a separate motion for the change of manager. It's the same gentleman that you approved for their annual change of manager that we did a few weeks ago. This was just the seasonals.
I'll take a motion for the change of manager.
The change of manager to Philip Alexander Lace, and I'd make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have motion in a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number six is, was mentioned earlier by Brian, which is the Middleton 300th Committee Charge and Review. And I'm going to look that up on my, on my items here, if somebody wants to start me off with that.
Jackie, you want to dig into that a bit?
Sure, so the board will recall that we wanted to put some money aside at this upcoming annual town meeting to get going for a 300th anniversary celebration for 2028. Before you, as a charge to create a committee to do so, basically just widen the effort, and the charge that you see in your packet is put together from a number of other communities that have recently done this type of work. As you know, there's some significant anniversaries this year for Lexington and Concord and the Commonwealth, but this is just a typical charge that we set up so that there can be a good group. I know the historical commissions...
We've been talking about it for a while.
They've been talking about it for a while, but the goal is to really, like, get it into gear and use town meeting as a way to advertise that the committee exists, build up some community support, because truthfully, if we, if the effort doesn't start now, as the Historical Commission has started some work, we'll run out of time faster than we realized.
In addition to Historical Society, we should probably reach out and see the interest from the Patriotic Observances Committee, too. They probably have an interest.
I think Patriotic Observances is a great example, I think the Recreation Commission is a great example, our Council on Aging, you know, our community partners, like the Tri-Town Council, the Stream Team, the folks that put together, you know, Chief Will's Day, I think there's a lot of community.
Yeah. Well, I'm hoping that the schools, and more specifically, the elementary schools can build into their 2028 classroom plans some work around our 300th as well, because there's a lot of history in town that a lot of residents don't know about, and the best way to teach youth is make sure they're taught about it as well.
Great point, Brian.
I think the goal of this, too, is to reach out, so that there's an official strategy to reach out to all those parties, and then, you know, coming up on town meeting, we'll have some funding to put aside for the committee and for the 300th, and that way, we can do some advertising, get the word out, and by the time we're doing our annual appointments in late May and June, have some folks who may be interested in serving.
Sounds good.
I'd be interested in volunteering for that, so.
I look forward to your talent bank application.
We'll see about the future meeting, we may appoint...
I don't know, I might not be qualified as Mr. Androucci.
That's a tough one to follow.
In fact, I'm sure I'm not.
Do you need a motion for us to actually...
But we could follow his lead.
Do you need a motion from us to actually create the charge of this committee and then post interest of individuals that want to serve, and then at a certain future date make that appointment, or?
If that's how the board would like to proceed, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if so, I would move that this board create a committee known as the Milton 300th Anniversary Committee, which will be comprised of up to nine members that will serve for a three-year term, and that term may be reappointed by this board, the Select Board. I'd also move that we promote this both on our website and other sources, social media and others, and by June, do you think, Justin? When would you want to see appointments?
About July 1st.
By July 1st, so in a June meeting to appoint the nine members.
I'll second that.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None. So that seed's planted, and looking forward to, seeing as things go, looking forward to that coming together. Next, we can move on. Item number seven, which will be our fiscal year '26, just a budget update and discussions. We have slated to discuss municipal, elementary, schools, and Masco separately, but we can begin with talking about the municipal side, if you would, Mr. Sulzberg.
Sure. It's unlike us to be ahead of schedule, so I'll take it, though. So in your packet, there's a memo penned by me, as well as Jackie and Sarah, highlighting some of the fiscal '26 operating and capital budget updates, some things that we've seen change from your Saturday capital budget meeting earlier in the month, between that point and now. We rehashed this a little bit last night at the Finance Committee. Acosta was present, so my apologies, because he's going to sit through it twice, but it's not unusual for there to be a lot of movement in March, right? And we see that every year in every budget cycle. When we're talking about things in February, it's extraordinarily vague. By March, to kick off, things are a little up in the air, and then usually towards the end of the month, things start to kind of settle. So some of the things that we've seen settle that are large budget drivers include the health insurance number that came in at 17.62%, some other outstanding items that we're still waiting on, though, are the elementary school, who will be joining us at this meeting later in the evening, as well as Masco. Both committees that are working diligently to try to address a difficult budget year in the same way that we're trying to address a difficult budget year. So on the town side, what we've been looking to do is take a hard look, and we made reference to this at the last Select Board meeting, to see if there are any areas or opportunities that we can make surgical cuts within our budget, just to try to tighten the belt a little bit. The way we're looking at this is, we don't want to ask the taxpayer for a dime more than we have to. And so with that in mind, we did identify about $150,000 in cuts going line by line meticulously through the budget. $75,000 of that is taking the police cruiser out of the operating budget and into the capital budget. We all agree that that's a more appropriate place to have a vehicle, and in having conversations with Chief Sampson, there was a conversation of, you know, is a new cruiser needed year over year, every year? And the thought is, you don't want to get to a point where your fleet of vehicles, whether it be in the police, fire, DPW, anywhere in your operations, you don't want to push it to a point where all of a sudden, all of your vehicles are failing at once, and all of a sudden, you get nailed one year at an annual town meeting to replace them. and all of a sudden, you get nailed one year in the annual town meeting to replace some old fleet.
We had a struggle with that year back before you were here, when the sheriff pulled the rug out from under us on the vehicles that we had. And we had to quickly fund the rotation of new vehicles. The only question I'd have on that is, it seems to be almost annually, a cruiser ends up getting recycled. Is, does the chief have any type of, like, five- to seven-year schedule on cruisers that shows that moving it to the capital makes sense rather than? Because it's, for me, it's a recurring item, otherwise.
Yep. That was part of the discussion, is taking a look at the existing fleet, seeing how old they are. But not only age, also miles are a big factor that we talk about. And Chief Sampson's always quick to remind everybody that the cruisers run 24/7. So it's not like, you know, if you're looking at a car and saying, oh, it's only five years old. Realistically, that's kind of artificially aged a little bit when you're talking about a PD. But we did take a look at the fleet schedule and determined that if not annually, maybe a two-year-on-one-year-off cycle might be more appropriate. And then, you know, continue to monitor, obviously. The other thing is, sometimes things happen. You know, one of our kind of more mid-to-older age cruisers got totaled earlier in the year and got replaced earlier than typically would have with a brand-new cruiser. And so those are some things that you need to kind of take into consideration as well. So in Chief Sampson's words, when I started this conversation, he would rather the extra officer than the car. And he felt that it was appropriate to try to also show that he's tightening the belt and trying to make some type of sacrifice to the taxpayer in taking this year off for a cruiser in hopes of further cementing their argument for the override. So I appreciate your sacrifice.
It's not going to capital, it's coming off.
It's coming off entirely for this year. And then next year, it will be on the capital plan, probably two years on, one year off.
Good.
So that was a good opportunity. And then the remainder of that $150,000, it's, you know, items ranging in $10,000 in overtime. And, you know, Council on Aging, for example, it's not used all the way down to a, I think it was a $1,000 or $1,400, maybe, line in the Veterans Budget for a part-time Veterans Agent that was more reflective of an organizational need three Veterans Agents ago that has just kind of sits there year over year. So we really went through and scrapped that together. But it's $150, and it helps close the gap. We're also continuing to look at town revenue on the other side, seeing if we can try to meet somewhere in the middle. We don't have any changes that we've identified from when you all met in early March to now. But I will say, we are constantly and continually monitoring the data, and we anticipate to have some fresh numbers come in for the end of March. So if we see anything there that indicates that we can conservatively push some of those up, we will do that.
Yeah. I'm mostly interested in looking at the meals tax.
Yeah. I think that will continue to grow. And if there is an economic downturn, I think we'll still grow because none of the establishments in Middleton are high-end. So typically, if the economy's slowing down, people are buying down in restaurants. So the Middleton restaurants will be kind of toward the tail end of feeling the effect. So I think it would be tweaking it up would be appropriate.
Yeah. And given that the local planning board, and, sorry, Board of Appeals has just given approval for at the front portion of the Angelica site, where it looks like there's going to be another restaurant of, I guess, significant size is going to be moving there. I think that's only going to continue to increase those numbers. And I know when we talked with Sarah about this at, it might have been the Capital Saturday Budget, she was waiting for the next tranche of revenue numbers to come in. So I think if they bear that, then I'm more than comfortable with making that number a higher growth for 2026.
So we'll wait and see on that item. Other outstanding items, as referenced, Middleton Elementary School, who is partly now here. We're a little ahead of schedule. You're not late. Don't worry. The, we anticipate them to have their next meeting on April 7th. Right? Is that correct?
When?
April 7th.
Our next meeting, no, our next meeting is on Monday.
Their next meeting is on Monday, with another meeting to follow on April 7th.
Actually, sorry. It's the, we have one on Monday, the 24th, and then our budget hearing is on Monday, the 31st.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it. And that will allow us ample time to get some of the finalized numbers on the warrant, which you saw there are some placeholders in there. So it's partly what we're waiting for. So thank you to the school committee. Essex North Shore, Essex TAC, we're not anticipating any changes at this point in time. We've made some minor reductions to the operating budget based on an increase to the CPC budget. That's something that we have in hand for, well, the budget is in the warrant, the projects are not yet.
Could I interrupt for a second on Essex North Shore? So no additional changes from what we were told prior, which was, we were seeing an increase in anticipated Middleton census there by how many students?
Eight. From 54 to 62.
Is this going to be the high watermark of the number of Middleton students there?
It may, you know, increase because part of the reason for the jump is they expanded their capacity. So I don't know how fast they ramped up, you know? Because now, the, this year's senior class is smaller than the incoming class. So if that sort of continues, we could see a bump up. But I don't think it'll be a significant one in terms of, not the eight students that we saw for this year.
Okay. The last time we saw a big jump in that was back in, what's, when was the last override? 2017? Okay. Sorry. Thanks, Justin.
And then rounding out this section, we've had a couple further conversations relative to the capital plan and a couple items within the capital plan in relation to the ballot questions. And so in particular, it's the fire truck for fiscal '26 and the Fuller Meadow Roof. We had talked a little bit about the potential for a debt exclusion. And it was our preference at this time, although we would appreciate input from the Select Board. But it's our belief that we're better served going for an authorization to borrow in fiscal year '26 and then come around in fiscal year '27 to request a debt exclusion for those two items. And there are really three factors that are driving that belief. So one is, we're waiting for a grant for the truck. So we don't want to go through the process of needlessly asking the voters for a debt exclusion on something that may potentially be paid for with grant funds. The second piece is the true cost of the Fuller Meadow Roof, which they have, as I mentioned earlier, assigned an OPM and an architect. But we don't have a probable estimated cost yet for construction dollars. So we'd want to, right now, it's a $2.2 million placeholder. But once again, when it comes to requesting the voters to exclude that debt, we want to go in with a, to the penny number, and we'll have a better picture at that point in time.
So your anticipation is this May Town Meeting asking for the authority to borrow for both of those? Now, obviously, on the, on the fire truck, ladder truck, Chief, we talked about this. You're probably three-plus years from delivery? So we wouldn't be bonding that until that point? And for the roof, would we go immediately to a bond? Or would we slide bans until the project's done?
That is a little bit dependent on the project schedule, which it's my understanding it's a little up in the air at this point in time.
But I think we want to wait. Because, you know, there's bonding costs every time you bond. So when we know that number, when we know the number for the municipal complex and for the fire truck, and then we can roll that into one bond instead of trying, you know, incurring the costs of multiple bondings.
Well, we will do a separate bond for the fire truck. It's not going to be as long of a bond as a building.
Well, no. You can build in, into the bond, shorter repayments for some of it than for the others, but you can do-
So I guess the only question I have is, so if Town Meeting gives approval for the authorization of the bond and we move through the process, we're not going to, the, obviously, the truck won't be paid for until it's delivered. So that'll be multiple years from now. But are we, is there a possibility that roof activity could happen prior to July 1st, 2026?
When you say roof activity, do you mean construction?
Construction.
Yes.
So the risk we're taking is we are issuing a ban without, without an approval for a-
Exclusion.
An exclusion.
Something short-term. Yep. And then, so the third outstanding factor here is relative to the municipal campus complex and that. We went back to that special Town Meeting. The voters generously approved an additional almost $10 million. And then we've been working hard to defend that money very carefully. And so at this point in time, we can say publicly with confidence that $3.5 million of that, we're going to give back, or more appropriately, not borrow. And I think the hope is, is that a year from now, we're going to definitively know what the finer, or the final price tag is for the municipal campus project. And if we can continue driving that 3.5 to something closer to a 4.2 in savings, which, you know, is not a guarantee, but we endeavor to do that, the proposed cost of the fire truck and the proposed cost of the Fuller Meadow Roof could slide right into that and backfill that number, so that it's effectively-
Still need, it would still need a-
It would still need approval. But I think in talking to the Middleton resident, being able to say, like, hey, we defended this very firmly. We were very conservative with this money. And would you, you know, consider doing a debt exclusion to make up the difference? It's kind of a net zero. So that's our hope.
So as long as folks are comfortable with, is always the risk of roof construction begins and then a debt exclusion vote fails. You know?
What happens then?
We do have two years I would also offer. So if, whether, I think the, one correction I would make, Brian, is it's an authorization to borrow, not to bond, because then-
No, I get that.
Which is for anyone watching at home. And with a ban, you don't have to start returning payments for two years. So we would actually, if it were to go on for a ballot for next spring and fail, we would have a second attempt to do it. Because you, it's two years before you're required to start making payments. So I would offer that there is a little bit of flexibility. And to Justin's point, this allows the school committee and the superintendent's office to move forward with the roof project, get a better number. And at the same time, they've got what they need to do with contracting, procurement, bidding. But it gives them enough runway to get organized with what that final number looks like before we put that final number on a ballot question.
When does Sarah and the treasurer think would be the appropriate timeframe that we're going to be doing final bonding for the municipal project? I know there's, you know, the initial bond, we're still expending from there. Anything additional will be floating bans. But when do we think the final ballpark? I mean, I'm not looking for a date and a time.
We've had cash, like, a lot of cash flow conversations. But I think we're still waiting to see what that final number is. And I think it's dependent on when we definitively know what that final number is. So I couldn't offer a number.
The only reason why I'm asking that is, does our, does our bonding consultants, our finance consultants, believe that two years from now, we will be jumping through different hoops for the current bond rating which we have now? And I know the bond rating we have now, for all intents and purposes, is as high as it'll ever get for Middleton because of demographic issues, not about financial issues. We're getting the best bond rate because of the financial position of the town. I'm not saying that the financial position's going to change. What I'm saying is, moving this out two or maybe three years for bonding everything, is that going, are we going to have to run all of those hoops again to get to the bonding rating that we have now?
I mean, potentially. So there's one outlying factor, which is market conditions. And so that's something that we're continuing to monitor as well. And right now, that, you know, the economy's a little bit up in the air. But, I mean, that could be a driving factor as well, as we might say, hey, you know, we're better off trying to push this off as long as we can if the interest rates are going to take a dip.
Yeah. I think they're going to take a dip. I'm more concerned about everything that was done by Sarah and your office and others to get us to the position of the bond rating we got. I don't know how long that lasts for.
Well, don't you have to, every time you bond, you have to go through the rating?
No. May I? I had just spoken with Hilltop a couple weeks ago about the other question. So no, we don't have to go through the bond rating every single time. From what Hilltop indicated to Nick and I a few weeks ago, because we had asked them some preliminary questions, we're, for the ban for the municipal project, whenever we do the second ban, that bond rating would stay. We don't have to go through that whole process again. Eventually, we might. But we're also, Sarah's office is very careful, as is Nick's, in doing all of the same things that we've been doing that established that initial bond rating. So A, it lives on for a little while longer. And B, we're still doing all the things that we are doing well that allowed us to have that bond rating to begin with. Certainly, market conditions are market conditions. None of us can predict that. But we are in a sound position with Hilltop. I know Nick just finalized and submitted our annual report this week. So we're still doing all the things that we're doing to maintain that bond rating that had been done to the credit of Sarah and the team that was there previously.
And I would offer at your next meeting, Treasurer Federico is slated to be the department head update. So I think maybe we'll save those for when he's in.
Okay.
So with that said, next step items. So the fiscal '26 operating budget remains at this time at a deficit of $27,000, which is extremely manageable. So our hope is, being able to take a look at the revenues, we'll be able to, between that and maybe a few more smaller cuts, get to zero on that and present a balanced budget in a really good place. But there are a few assumptions that go into that that we wanted to cover once again as well. So the guidance for the elementary schools was 2.5% plus health insurance and the levy limit budget. Everything beyond that is going to be funded through an operating override. So that's the number that Chair Eakin and her team are currently narrowing down and honing in on.
Justin, can I ask you a question? Is, last time we all spoke, the health insurance wasn't a definite. Is that, is there any chance of that changing, or is that definite now?
So we met with them last week, and it's looking more like a definite. So unfortunately.
We're not the only one. Everybody has gotten pummeled this year. And I, not to read ahead on the hymnal here, but we need to continue to carry a similar number going into future budget sessions. No doubt about it.
Sarah's planning 20%.
Yep.
It's worth carrying 12.
Little question.
Well, that's the thing. It's 12 used to be, like, super conservative. Like, oh, do 12. We'll know it'll come in around seven or eight, maybe.
It's a 7% increase.
It's a tough, tough budget year. Relative to Masco, we're looking to effectively level fund the Masco budget in Middleton, which proportionally relative to Boxer and Top Field would be about a $680,000 increase for Top Field and about a $350,000 or so increase for Boxer, with Middleton effectively being level funded. So that would represent, on the aggregate, about a 4.1% increase for Masco. That situation's a little more complex, and there's a few more moving parts, obviously, because we're coordinating with two other towns. So I had a meeting as recently as yesterday with Matt Kugan in Boxer and Kevin Hartunian in Top Field, just making sure that we're all kind of in lockstep about the way we're doing this, especially relative to the number that we're plugging into our budgets. So what it looks like at this point in time is that base level of the, about 350 for Boxer and level fund for Middleton is something that those two communities can fit within our levy limit. Top Field only has about $195,000 available in their levy limit. So they're going to have to do, yeah, tight, a first lift override just to get to where Middleton and Boxer are. And then, once everybody's on that level playing field, there's going to be a second override for Top Field and a first for Middleton and Boxer to get to the full amount that Masco was talking about right now. So whatever that number is, is partly dependent on how far they can come down- partly dependent on how far they can come down, and I know they've spoken a little bit about making some cuts, and I'm sure there'll be some more discussion about it later, but one way or another, that's the number we're looking to carry right now for our budget, so when I say we're 27,000 in the hole, that's assuming a level fund in Middleton for Masco. And then the last piece here, oh, sorry, two more pieces, so one of them is, we had some conversation about the existing levy capacity and what the policy is surrounding that, typically, in recent history, there's been a desire to keep 1%, this is assuming that we're using half of that, so a half a percent into the levy limit, maintaining the other half, knowing full well that next year is going to be an extremely difficult year, potentially, it's looking like worse than this year, so with that in mind, we're projecting for fiscal year '27 about a $1 million deficit, now keep in mind, we're carrying 20% increase for health insurance, but it could very well come in at 20% next year, we're not being alarmist there, so that, that's the reality of
So, so remind me, Justin, on our financial policies that we've adopted, the financial policy calls for us to call, carry what for existing levy capacity?
1%.
So part of, I think, what helped expedite our movement to a much stronger bond rating was both the adoption of our fiscal policies, but how we have stayed aligned to those, so if we actually, if we moved, if we didn't move to a half a percentage on levy capacity and we kept it at 1%, what does that do to the $27,000 deficit?
Adds 233,000 to it.
So, I'm, I just, and I understand the rationale for doing that this year, but I also want to know what the plan is to get us back to 1%.
Well, and, and that's where the, I think the language of amending the excess levy policy, you know, becomes, you know, important, you know, I, I think the language should be, you know, something that recognizes that 1% is our desired endpoint, but under, you know, circumstances, by a vote of the select board and the FinCom, we can drop down to 0.25% and establish a no longer than three-year path to get back to the 1%, so with such a language, we're not going down to the bottom of what we could, we're just going down to the half, and say, okay, for, it'd be a half for FY '26, a half for FY '27, 0.75 for FY ' '28, and then FY '29 back to 1, so we establish the policy, we, we cut, we have the pathway back, and a year from now, if we need to adjust those, we can, but we can never go backwards, so we don't want to establish a new policy and cut right down to the bare bones of
No, 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 I agree with that, I'm, I'm concerned about the ability to get us back to upset, I mean, that's, that's a 250,000, that's a quarter of a million dollar makeup over a period of time that is not going to happen next year, because the following fiscal year budget is going to be worse, we're gonna, we're gonna have enrollment shift issue.
And that million dollars is assuming we've gone back to 1% excess levy capacity for
That a million is not at a half a percent, correct.
Correct.
I mean, quite honestly, it's always very hard now, at least with the scenarios that, that Sarah shows for future years, I know it's very hard this early on to know, but is that also taking into effect what we're expecting is going to happen with, as the Middleton, the shift to Middleton on Masco and FY '27, we're going to be dealing with what Topfield's dealing with this year, is that projected in the million?
It's assuming, I believe, four and a half or 5% across the board for all education, so that's an important piece, is that very well could be higher.
Or it could be lower.
In an ideal world, but that's, that's coming up on the agenda, so.
If I, can I add one piece too, so when Nick Federico, our treasurer, and I did meet with Hilltop a couple of weeks ago, Brian, that exact question was one that we addressed with them, and that's part of the reason why we'd put forward at the two capital budget meetings, the change in, changing the policy language, when an override question is on the table, that that be, to the language Costa just spoke to, but in, only in the circumstances when there's an override on the table would we take advantage of that disclaimer of dropping the 1% lower, to your very point, to make sure that our financial policies still stay competitive, and Hilltop didn't have any issue with us making that change in terms of like, how they would assess us, so they felt comfortable that by making that, it's a policy change, but we're still, but only in the years when an override's on the table would we even tap into that.
So we'll
But they understand that if there's an override this year, say it's successful, we've tapped in and we've moved our levy to 0.5 instead of 1%, is there an expectation from Hilltop, is their expectation more aligned to what Costa's scenario is, is a three-year cycle to get us back to 1%, or is their belief FY '27, maybe no override and you're back to 1%?
We, Costa just made that up, maybe you said it at FinCom last night, but it was the first time I heard it, so I didn't have that language, but I can bring that back to them as well.
Yeah, that's
I think, because our goal was just to go right back to 1% next year.
And all
Costa is being very generous with that.
But it's also, you know, not
You gotta have the strategy.
It's kind of unrealistic to be able to go right back, you know, to 1%, and that's why I think, you know, the raiders would look more kindly to a gradual
I would also ask what it would look like if we did a quarter of a percent instead of a half a percent, I, that, this gives me angst, wiping out 50% of our levy capacity, and, you know, and I get, last year when we asked for the override, both for schools and police and fire, there are some that asked the question, well, have you, kind of, have you spent down all of your savings, so to speak, or what your capability is for revenue, and, you know, this is a different budget cycle this year, I mean, Justin, you just spent time talking about how you guys went line by line and removed another $150,000 from the budget at the same time that you are being as rational, but not overly liberal in revenue forecasting, I, I, my concern is that we're blowing a huge future hole in the budget by moving a half a percent from our levy capacity, the thing that I have liked about the way that we have managed is, we have managed the levy capacity historically, both from when we had the policies and even prior when we didn't have the policy, but we still lived with a bit of that policy in the mind of, it's, it's like saying, you're saving dollars, or here's, here's what you bring in in revenue, or here's what your paycheck is, we're basically saying we're going to spend our paycheck all but a half a percent every year, and we're a good year on free cash because of, it was the right timing on all of our bonding and, and when the dollars came in, those free cash scenarios aren't going to continue, secondly, you've been through the budget with a fine-tooth comb, we've been very realistic in what we're going to fund this year, both in and outside of the override, so I, I've got a lot of angst about moving to a half a percent, I mean, I'm not saying absolutely not yet, but these are the items that are concerning.
Yep, and we can definitely run a scenario to see what that looks like, obviously, the $27,000 deficit's going to increase to a six-figure figure, but we, we can definitely take a look at it, and in terms of impact to our bond rating, it's, it's always in my understanding anyway, there's, you know, dozens of different factors that go into that, and I wouldn't get too hung up on bond impact, bond rating impact, but in terms of concern
No, but what I heard from our, from our outside auditor was, a lot of what the work that we had done around the policies, and then not just implementing, but following them, had a pretty significant effect on our final jump to that top tier.
And some, some of the policies, we, you know, other than excess levy, you know, we had, all the others have a floor and a ceiling, and then some of them were over the ceiling, so to me, you know, if you have a ceiling and you exceed it, yeah, you, you've got more in reserves, but you're violating your own policy, so that's not a
No, 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 I get it.
So, I mean, I don't, if we adapt the policy the right way, I don't see an issue with the bond, you know, raiders looking at it, you know, the concern about whether or not we can then, you know, make that use of the half a percent, you know, that's the more concrete issue in my mind, and, you know, only circumstances will dictate
I just, I want everybody to remember, the override, at least as we're proposing on the municipal side, there's no fluff in that override, it's specifically to fund the staffing shortfall at police and fire and, and specifically, public safety, there's really nothing else there, so there is not, this is not like a past override in 2017 when we saw on the horizon of what was potentially going to happen at Essex Tech, where we were seeing considerable enrollment shifts and, and items on our, on our elementary and Masco side, there's no, there's no capacity increase in this override, so our capacity continues to ride, to ride within our levy, and so that's probably why I have more angst this year, we're not asking for an override that says it's to fund this, but to give us a little bit of capacity so we can weather what we know is coming in FY '27 in addition to what we have in FY '26, so I guess I'll look at the scenarios, but I still have some angst about that.
And in addition to the scenarios, we'll bring forward some language relative to potential policy changes, they can probably get it in in a joint meeting at the reading of the warrant next week, because you and the FinCom will be in the same room.
That would make sense.
So, from a messaging standpoint, that, you know, in closing, on the town side anyway, the, the biggest takeaway is, we're not quite fully out of the woods yet for fiscal year '26, but we're pretty close, and we're pushing in the right direction, even going out of fiscal '26 though, with a balanced budget, and even if the override passes for police and fire, there is still a staffing shortage for police and fire, that that one override doesn't solve that issue, and that even if we balance the budget for fiscal '26, we're projecting an equally as bad year upcoming for fiscal '27, and both of those realities don't go away.
And at the same time though, you know, at, we, the year always looks bad as we're finishing up the next year.
Yep.
A little worse, you know, '27 than in the past, but it always looks kind of bad.
I, at some point, you know, the voters didn't approve any override last year, both for the fire, police, elementary, or, or otherwise, I also want to be clear, I mean, if the voters give approval and the taxpayers give approval to increase taxes this year as an override, an operational override, not a, a debt exclusion, so a permanent override, I don't want to go into a budget session of FY '27 saying, well, we've, we've lost some of our levy capacity and therefore we're going to have to ask for another override, I just, at some point, the voters are going to revolt.
There'll be override out.
Well, they're almost there.
So Mr. Chair, that's everything on the municipal side for now, on that dreary note, would you like to perhaps call up our peers at the, the elementary schools to the table and?
Sure, I'm not sure how far you were ahead with, you know, any direction for us, you know, beyond your budget, and now we haven't got it yet, or even the override, but anything you have for us would be helpful.
Sure, thank you, so the school committee met on March 3rd, and we made adjusted, adjustments to our budget totaling $383,000 in adjustments, bringing it down to an override of $540,000, that would be above guideline, and that 383,000 includes what we're asking from the stabilization fund, so that will be determined, obviously, by the FinCom and you guys, but we're still reviewing everything and, you know, trying to be sensitive to everybody that's involved, because as we said in that meeting, it's, it's really coming down to people, you know, and we really want to be careful and be sensitive to, to everybody, but like I said before, we're meeting on Monday to deliberate further, and then we'll have our budget hearing a week after that on the 31st.
And is after the 31st, this when you'll finalize?
It's our hearing, so yeah, it'll be done by then, yeah.
So a couple of things, so right now, as you stand before your next budget meeting, you're looking at about a $540,000 override?
Yeah.
Can you, what are some of the items that fall into that 540,000?
So out of district, special ed is, is a big one that we're funding, transportation is another one, and it's just, you know, operation of the building, costs have gone up ever as, as you guys know.
So, and you and I have talked about this, just a couple of points I want to make, so we've been very clear, both in our override last year and police and fire, what would happen if the override didn't pass? At the beginning of this meeting, we talked about, on our warrant, you know, in the last two weeks, we've had $18,000 in fire department overtime, we've had $9,800 in police department overtime, why, because we don't actually have the staff to actually perform the work, because of the changing in policing and the inability to, to rely as much on reserve firefighters or part-time firefighters, because, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point we've talked about this, and very clear if the override didn't pass last year, what would happen, and we're living it right now, fire chief and his, his men and women were out with yet another brush fire, we're starting to figure out what that total cost was for the brush fires this year, that we're going to have to fund at some point, a lot of it was funded by overtime, so what would be very helpful, after you guys get through your hearing and such, is if this override doesn't pass, exactly what does that mean? Because last year, your override for, just look at my notes, your override last year of $375,000, which was for instructional interventionists, specialist programming, classroom section, and student support personnel totaling $375,000, didn't pass, and you and I have talked about that, and after, we asked the voters to permanently increase our taxes for that, it's not a priority anymore, so I think we need some clarity of what happens, you're telling us it's a priority, we're telling the voters that it's a priority, what's going to happen if it doesn't pass, I, I mean, I don't want scorched earth mentality, but if, we're now talking about an override that's a little less than twice of what we asked for last year, and the 350,000 from last year wasn't even brought forward in any of the budget documents this year, so I need to understand if, because it's this board that actually places the override on the ballot, I need to understand what happens if $540,000, that may be larger or maybe less after your budget hearing, I don't know, what happens?
Yeah, that will be crystal clear, we're meeting on the 31st, like I said, that information will be clear to the board, and, you know, I already have plans with another board member as well as contacts in the PTO and with the teachers' association to make that messaging clear to the community.
Yeah, and, I mean, it's the same messaging that we'll be making with you, so
Right.
And then secondly, you and I also talked about this, so the 31st, let's call April 1st, is when we're going to know what your override's going to look like, it's going to be about a month until town meeting, but part of it is not just the town meeting vote, it's also the ballot vote that happens seven days afterwards, so we do early voting in this town, so there may be some people that are going to go and actually cast a ballot prior to town meeting, where we'll, we will explain clearly to the voters that are in the room at town meeting what the override means, but we have a very short window to educate folks of the override, I mean, we've been doing this for, we've known that exactly what the override amount was going to be on the municipal side, our budget is basically set, we going to be on the municipal side, our budget is basically set, we just talked about $150,000 in tweaks that have happened, but our budget has basically been set on police, fire, DPW, the entire municipal side, for probably a month. We've got to change the process next year, we can't wait until, this is not Masco, it's not a regional school district, you guys are another department of the town, just like the fire chief isn't back, our police chief, our DPW, we can't have this so late in the process. This year, it's becoming problematic, I'm not blaming you for it, it's the process that we've all followed, but it has to change going forward.
Yeah, I hear you, I am a doer, I like to get things done, and I hate excuses, especially when the excuses are that we're too busy, because we're all busy, we all have things to do. I, I hear what you're saying, and, you know, I, that has been expressed to Central Office too, we're going to do everything that we can.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I think, you know, if we need to kind of give a little on our end, maybe our first, our first Saturday in February meeting becomes the second Saturday in February, if that gives you guys more time to get from what Masco used to call breathing, the breathing budget, or the level funded, and then to start laying out what those are. And the same thing with the March meeting, but, you know, we would like to have a kind of unified message to bring to the voters of, this is, we're not, I mean, we're going to have three overrides on the ballot, and I don't want this to be a pick and choose which one's more important, they're all important, but it's kind of hard right now, where we don't know what the override's going to be, two of the three overrides, and one of them we have control over. So, that's just my two cents.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Anything else, anybody else? All right. And I don't know, same, I don't know how much Masco has along to present, but if you have any direction for us for where you're at, either operation, or any information on, on any override, on the override. We'll take whatever information that you, that you have.
Do you need the TV, Mike?
You want to sit down?
It takes me two seconds if you want it.
Take a seat.
That's okay. I can do this.
Dr. Harvey, if you want to sit at the table?
Yeah, take a seat.
Settle in, take your time.
So, here's the one question, I guess, that I somewhat missed along the way, is, does Middleton have a guideline number for Middleton?
So, we discussed that just before you walked in the door, so, we had a conversation, or have been having conversations between us, Topsfield and Boxer, about where we're going to land and where we actually can land relative to our respective levy limits. So, Topsfield, I believe, has about $195,000 before it's bounced out of their ceiling, and the number we landed on was level funding in Middleton, which would represent proportionally about $680,000 of an increase in Topsfield, and about $360,000 in Boxer, which represents an overall aggregate 4.1% increase for Masco, with the understanding that that 4.1% can be held within Middleton's levy limit, being level funded, can be held within Boxer's levy limit, but it would require an override, or a primary override, in Topsfield to even get to that base level.
So, can you explain, because I think, not so much trust for people watching, to explain, like, the elementary, we gave a 2.5% guideline, and now you're saying Masco, nothing, and is it due to enrollment, or what, what, could you just explain for people watching, because it's confusing?
Nope, sure. So, so the biggest difference here, obviously, is that the elementary school is exclusively relative to Middleton, right? But for Masco, you're coordinating between three communities, Middleton, Topsfield, and Boxer, and so, there are swings from year to year, based on enrollment, that shift proportionally, pieces of that budget can either increase or decrease within any one of those three towns. I know, by the way, everybody here already knows this, this is for the people at home. And so, what we're looking at this year is there is a big swing relative to enrollment that pushed a large proportion of that over to Topsfield. Things are a little more calm on the Middleton side this year, with the understanding that if not next year, or the year after, there's probably going to be a swing back, that we need to try to keep in mind. And so, to your point, Jeff, when we say level funded in Middleton, what that, the number that really matters, for Masco's sake, and I think, in my opinion, but probably a shared opinion, is what is their overall increase? And so, while it's, it's 2.5 plus health insurance for the elementary school in Middleton, the aggregate overall between the three communities for Masco would be 4.1%.
Thanks.
And we, and we just nailed that down late yesterday, Dr. Harvey, so I'll get together with Mr. Coogan and Mr. Hartunian, and we'll shoot you some type of email or something a little more formal, laying that out for you. And then, obviously, with the understanding that after that first line, anything beyond that would be a secondary override in Topsfield, and then the first override in Middleton, and the first override in Boxer.
So, I mean, one advantage of this approach is that should overrides fail in two of the three communities, because the 4.1 increases within the levy of two of the towns, Masco has an approved budget.
Right.
You still have the option of seeking to increase it, but at least you don't have to, to have a budget.
What is on your schedule as far as getting, you know, having, with your meetings coming up?
We're set to vote tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, you'll have it up, yeah.
We have to have it done by Friday, so, right down to the wire.
So, we're saying that if the budget were increased 4.1%, that we have, there would be no override, it's the overage over that is what would trigger the override?
Because a 4.1% budget increase means zero assessment increase for Middleton.
So, and so, so and what is the budget increase that you're proposing, percent?
Let me get back to my handy dandy sheets, make sure I'm looking at the right one. We are working right now at 8.2.
So, double?
Overall.
So, I guess the same, Brian, same question would be appropriate, what, what would happen if you didn't get it?
It'd be catastrophic. It's, you know, level service for us is, I just want to make sure I got my numbers right, level service for us is 10.7%, which is $3.5 million in increase. The school committee's been working hard for the last three weeks now, twice, you know, twice a week going on, to try to cut 800,000 is what we're, you know, what the committee's trying to get to, which would get to that 8.2%.
And let me ask you, last Tuesday, at last Tuesday's meeting, the chair, you know, Joe, talked about, when you were talking about your scenario one of cuts, and teachers in certain departments, he said, "Well, I asked the question, if we make this cut, does it increase class size?" He said, "No." Does it decrease AP offerings? He said, "No." So, how can you have that person, so you can lose that person and still be level service?
It would increase class sizes slightly, whenever you lose somebody, I mean, it's, I think his question was how much, was what he was asking.
Well, I, it struck me...
And then the other question is offerings, so that's, you know, something that the committee's talking about, is, you know, can you run all of the advanced placement classes that everybody comes to expect when you start reducing, you know, five sections per department? You know, so we're trying to, trying to figure it all out.
Well, yeah, I, for, over a decade, I've heard about how much stress students are under at Masco, and I think part of their stress is that there are too many choices, there's nothing to limit, like, you know, Lexington High limits how many APs students can take in a year and in their career. And when you have, the more choices you have, I think, you know, the more stress you feel about, you know, "Well, if I may make the wrong choice." If you're limited as to the number of choices, maybe that goes away. And as far as, you know, college, you know, admissions, you know, my daughter was an admissions officer in two different highly competitive universities, and one of the criteria she used is, did the applicant take advantage of everything that the school had offered? So, the Lexington High senior that has applied, that he could take four APs, he took four APs, he was rated higher than a Masco student that took five APs, but he could have taken six, could have taken seven. So, to me, it's kind, you know, limiting choices is not a bad thing, in terms of, you know, stress.
Is, oh, go ahead. No, I'm, no, go ahead, if it's on that, online, I had some different...
I was just going to say, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not sure the full board would agree with that, but of course, I do agree with you in the sense that, I think what I've learned through this process this year, is that the architecture of how the school is organized is fragile, right? If you tweak this, this breaks over here, if you tweak this, this breaks over here, at least that's what I'm, that's what, that's what's being evoked in me, right? And so, you were at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, Costa, I think I made the point that going at these budgets every year, under the organization that we have, and just trying to wipe out people every year, to save $100,000 here, $100,000 there, is not sustainable, it's not scalable. And I think I asserted that for us to be more sustainable over the years to come, we have to go after how we're organized. And so, whether that's the right dimension of the organization to go after, is the number of offerings, or the dimension is how we're organized into teams, or the dimension is some, something else, I don't know, right? But I do think that, starting at, you know, the end of the summer, we have got to start looking at how we're organized across the school, to weed out the inefficiencies of what I think is, is, you know, sort of systemic in Masco.
Trying, you know, trying to make, you know, adjustments from mid-January, when the superintendent presents the budgets, to mid-March, you know, is not enough time to discuss, you know, all the issues that you're talking about. So, if you start earlier, then you have a fighting chance, you know, to properly identify those things.
But it's not, I mean, it's just, it's not enough to just look at the inefficiencies under the organization as is, right? I think we really have to look at, you know, if I, if I correlate this to the corporate world, are we, should we reorganize, right? Could we be more efficient in a different organizational structure?
So, given that scenario, and so, someone that's married to a assistant superintendent of a regional school district, I, who's budget and finance, we live this over the kitchen table every night, and it's always the struggle when you have a multi-town district of, because you're, you're organized and your offerings are based on not what Middleton parents and students want, or not just what Boxer parents and students want, or now Topsfield. So, are there, given that scenario, what he's mentioning, are there districts that are doing this well, that are, when you look at how it's organized? And I get clearly of, a change here has a negative effect over here, and a change here, I clearly understand that, and I can see how you've clearly come to understand that as well. How, what should that look like? And so, and if getting to that reorg means spending our way to that reorg, that will pay dividends in out-years? I mean, I can imagine, the scenario that you just made, Costa, I could see if that was brought forward, I'd like to pop a lot of popcorn and sit and watch social media and watch parents head explode, that my child is losing opportunities on AP. Let me give you an example, my daughter graduated from Masco, got a great education, went on and got a nursing degree at Simmons, she took AP Bio, why? Her advisor said, "You've got to take it, take AP Bio, this is going to make a difference for you, and by the way, you'll be exempted from it when you go to school." She took AP Bio, she wasn't exempted from it, why? Because it, it was AP Bio, and then Bio for nursing. The stress my daughter went under her senior year, never mind that it happened to be in the midst of applying to schools and all of that, I wish I guided her differently on it, and I got to tell you, when she sat in her Bio classes in her nursing school, it all clicked for her, none of it clicked during her AP, why? Because she was so incredibly stressed out, and we actually talked at, to your point, Costa, with your daughter, we actually talked with admission counselors, and was talking about, "Well, my daughter's taking AP Bio," and she was, and they were like, "That doesn't matter, it literally doesn't matter." And so, some of that may have to be how we educate parents, students, boards like this, and others of, if there's a reorg, to your point, Matt, what does that look like, and how do we, how do we make that argument? And that may mean additional sections of certain AP classes, and some AP classes just disappear.
Yep.
But how do, how do you get to that? To, to be able to not have to surgically cut every year, that you cut here, and then something bad happens over here?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know the answer, right? I don't know what it looks like, I don't know exactly how to get there yet, I would imagine that we're not the only school out there that would have gone through this. I mean, again, like, I'm accustomed to the corporate worlds, and there's consultants out there that would help corporations reorg, I don't know if there's, there's consultants out there that would look at us.
Boston Consulting House of the world, yep.
Right, I mean, it's consulting for everything out there, I'm sure. I mean, I trust Dr. Harvey, I trust Jeff Sands, with their perspectives on how we're organized, and, you know, they would have to be enabled to have, and to be able to go down a study like this, to be able to do this, this, this research. And so, you know, I appreciate the notion that if we had to pay our way to reorging, or pay our way to at least assessing the current organization, you know, I appreciate that, I don't know what that looks like right now, because frankly, as Costa said, we start this process every January, and we're heads down, two, three, four nights a week, trying to work through this budget and scrap, you know, dollars and cents, and we just don't pick our heads up to look, you know, from the balcony down on the big picture.
Until May.
Until May, when we all go on break. For the summer, right? So, you're right. So, I think we have to commit to ourselves, and Dr. Harvey, I'm sorry for speaking out of line here, right? But I think we have to commit to ourselves that we are at least going to start, you know, late summer, when we really, you know, when we kick off our, our school committee season, we have to commit to ourselves that we're going to do this, because right now, we're just going to face the same thing next year. Which teachers are we going to lay off? And we'll debate about that for three weeks, and which department heads are we going to lay off, we'll debate about that. Which administrators should we lay off, we'll debate about that for three weeks. Nobody wants to lay anybody off, I get that, right? But my opinion is, and I don't share this with the rest of the community, and I may not share this with the rest of the board, but my opinion is, we should be presenting the school to the community as a, as an academic organization, we should be running it as a business.
Amen.
No argument from this board, just how do we get there?
It's hard.
It's hard.
But we have a good partner.
It's not the culture there, for sure.
We have a good partner.
So, so in, so, so we would be looking at, you're saying 8.2?
Yep.
So, on our side, we're looking at additional 4.1.
Which would be?
So, operating, if, if the 800 comes to pass, operating for Middleton would be $467,000 as an increase, 4.2%.
Just the increase?
The increase, yeah. So, it's 11, 11,578.67.
So, that 4.70 is the override amount.
Right, the 4.67 is the override amount, right.
Which would actually bring our two element, our two educational overrides to... Which would actually bring our two element, our two educational overrides to a cool million dollars. 460 and 540.
Which coincidentally is about the same as the public safety.
Well, everybody understands the pressures that everyone's under on here, and they're not getting any better. Um, our, okay, let me help my memory from last year, but of the override request this year now, any of the, any of what we're, you're looking for now was, had to do with, was on last year's override?
We didn't have an override last year.
We didn't have one last year for Masco.
No, we, um, no, there wasn't anything.
Um, I, I wasn't able to be at the entire Capitol meeting the first Saturday in March. I had a family event I had to be at. But could you give me a little bit of an update where we are on roof, HVAC? I know that School Building Authority has come out and heat pumps are now gonna be the part of future projects. But where are we on the, the process there and what do you guys?
For SBA, applications were submitted today.
Today.
For the middle school and the high school.
Perfect. And are you guys at some point in the future gonna be looking to engage a, both an architect and a project?
So right now.
So SBA should get back to you probably.
In the fall.
Sometimes early fall, early to mid-fall. And if, if you get the, the sign from SBA, then you'll move toward probably RFPs for project manager.
Project manager and design is the.
Design, so.
First part of the, first part of the process.
School Building Authority will approve whoever you approve for building, for project manager. And then they'll make the decision on the architect based on the ones that you recommend to them. So you would be likely before three-town meetings in May of next year for that project, which if approved, would likely kick off fall of '26, spring of '27?
Hopefully.
Okay.
I mean, it's the way MSBA right now is doing an every-other-year cycle. So what they said was kind of interesting. They're, they've, they've sort of changed their process a little bit. So it won't necessarily be that everybody's gonna find out in the fall. What they've said is they're willing to work with, with the districts to determine when the best time to make the award is, so that they avoid having special town meetings.
Well, it's A, it's special town meetings, and B, I think everybody at, both at the SBA and schools overall, watched what happened with the regional vocational school up in Haverhill, where a huge amount of money was segregated aside. Project couldn't get approved. They went back again, still didn't get approved. And then, you know, so I think they're giving a little bit of a rolling process.
That's exactly what they're gonna do. It's gonna roll. So, I mean, yeah, so that, and I think there's a, from the time they make the invitation, the clock starts on when the towns have to have a vote to approve the debt. Or just to secure the funding.
Yeah, and, and way to a bond, yeah.
Yeah, whether it's a bond or actually just straight up. So that's what they're gonna do, is set the clock so that it's, you know, if they come to us and say, when do you want to do it? And I think we're all looking at, you know, town meeting of 2026. And so that we don't have to have another special in the, you know, in January or December. They'll say, we won't make the award until March or April, so that you'll be in, in that window, so that you can just do the, do the vote at town meeting. I think the school committee plan right now, though, is to sort of make, make it a big ask and ask for the whole number in one shot. Not just the design.
Not just roofing, AC and building.
Not just the design and OPM work, to do the whole, you know, try and get a, get a sense of what the whole project's gonna cost. And some other things that we're also looking at, too.
And I know at the time, at last year's town meeting, there was some discussion that you all were engaging, doing some study of whether or not you wanted to go forward with a heat pump system.
Right.
Was that, that determination was made with what you submitted?
So right now, there's, in addition to the operating budget, there's $690,000 request for capital. And one, so there's a couple of things. One is electrification feasibility study. And this is us sort of hedging our bets that if MSBA comes back in October or whatever and says, sorry, no, that we've got something else in the works to give us a sense of what, you know, what this project's gonna cost and, you know, what the design would look like. And, you know, can we actually go, you know, fully electrified or the like? So that's 156,000. Uh, we have 16,000 we need to refurbish our track. It's got some big holes in it. I think it's 23 years old at this point. And the softball facility is not up to par with baseball. So we've, we've got $16,000 for a design work there. Both of the elevators in, in the building, so there's one in the high school, one in the middle school, they have both reached end of life. Uh, the manufacturer has told us no more parts, you know, the, our.
Guys told us.
Yeah, our supplier stockpiled them, so there's 200,000 roughly for each of those. Uh, and then another 100,000 to replace the lift on the press box at the football field. So that's the 690 as a, as a capital request. This is the second part of what we talked about last year, is sort of the two, you know, to add up to roughly a million. It's a little over now. But, I don't know, there was a discussion about doing that with free cash. I don't know if that's still, still the thing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's still part of our plan, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I just want to be very clear with the MSBA application, what was included in it and the potential outcomes from it. And I'll try to articulate this clearly, because it's a bit complex. We had a choice, so the MSBA off, the MSBA offered a reimbursement program for roofs, HVAC, and windows and doors. And you could apply to one, you could apply to two, you could apply to all three. If you applied to more than one and you get accepted, you can't then choose to only do a subset of them. And so.
So if you apply for all three and you get all three.
You have to do all three or you have to do none.
Yeah. Our windows, we're not old enough to apply for those, but everything else we, we qualify for.
So, so what's gonna happen here is the MSBA is allowing for roofs. We applied for roofs and heat pumps. So when the fall comes around and we get notified whether or not we'll be accepted into this, we won't have a choice on the type of HVAC system that we're gonna go down. So I want to circle back to what's in the request this year, which is 100, excuse me, 156K or something like that for an HVAC study. There is a chance that that HVAC study is going to say, do X. And if we get accepted into the MSBA program, we won't have a choice but to go with heat pumps. And we'll be okay with that.
And I, I get that.
Straight up heat pumps is what they're.
I, I think as a matter of time, if it hasn't already been made in their mind, it's gonna happen. SBA is gonna stop funding heat systems that aren't heat pumps.
Oh, they did.
I mean.
Boilers are no longer part of the issue.
This administration's been very clear that that's what they want at the state. The previous administration was already headed down that road. So, I mean, I assume your, your biggest challenge is gonna determine if you have enough electrical capacity coming into those buildings.
We should. It's, we had a study from National Grid last spring. And that, that was, they said the electrical system should, should be able to handle it.
And we have to have some backup plan in, in case of a power outage, because you still have to have some minimal heat in the building.
Right. So that, that would be something we would think about, too, is do we keep one boiler in each building as a backup?
Right. So, you know, I guess one.
I, I get that scenario and quite honestly, this is, I mean, my point last year at town meeting was exactly this. It was very clear from the folks that I had talked to at SBA, including the former chair, that this was gonna happen on, and heat pumps, based on what the administration was proposing, clearly on fossil fuels. So if, if we get accepted into both roof and heat pump, like heat pumps, two thumbs up. It's not gonna be cheap. You better prepare yourself for a wildly painful electric bill. You won't be paying the gas bill that you're paying now. But you're gonna be stunned, anybody that has a heat pump at home. It's not pretty right now.
So I do just want to point out, the reason, one of the reasons I brought that up is because we have the study going on that's included in the 670K, 690K, whatever it was. Uh, request for this year. And so question has come up, like, I think that, that was guidance from the towns, right? That they want to see the study done. And so the question has come back up, like, should we still do this study? I mean, in, in a day where we're struck for cash and a potential outcome of this MSBA application is, you're gonna do heat pumps. Should we still go do this study?
So is the kind of thing that's been answered almost already with if, if you're gonna go SBA and they're only.
If they're, if they're only, but if, if we don't get into the MSBA, you know, there might be something, you know, something short of full heat pump conversion that might be cheaper, you know, and would work. We wanna keep our options open on this? That's the, that's the problem. It's like, you know, if we're going with MSBA and you've got all the eggs in one basket and the MSBA says no, we're nowhere. You know, and that's what, that's what we're trying to avoid.
I get you, yeah.
If you're not doing the study now, you, and, you know, MSBA says no, then you'll be, okay, you're gonna choose something else, so you have to have a study to say what that's anything else is. So, you know.
That, for me, that's belt suspenders.
Right.
You know, if, if the SBA funding comes, then, I mean, at least the work that's happening in the study is probably gonna help inform the direction you're heading even with, even with heat pumps. And part of it may be how you address specifically around power outage and potential supplemental.
Right.
I think I just want to point out, we are trying to think of all the savings we could potentially go after, and that was one of them. It wasn't a fan favorite for us either, but put it all on the table.
And, and any cuts, I don't want to, that, that last, I mean, any cuts, is it, is it just teachers?
It's all over the place right now. I mean, it's, this.
It sounded like it was just teachers.
No, I mean, the committee's wrestling with everything right now. It's, you know, I, I don't wanna say anything at this point, because it changes everything.
Will there be, when the time comes, to advocate for an override? Will there be an exact, like we asked the elementary for it, exactly? If it doesn't happen, this is what's gonna happen?
I don't know. If, if the override failed, that's, we'd have to cut another 1.3 million.
Right. So people are gonna wanna know what that means.
I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Is that just teachers?
It's everything. That's gonna be all in. That will be.
That's, but again, to just point, you know, to kind of say what, what, what it is.
Did you end last night's meeting with the expectation that, you know, eight people were supporting something?
We had seven.
Well, to be clear, we're missing, we're missing a board member.
Right.
Who will be voting tomorrow. We expect to be voting tomorrow. And so we weren't sure. So we had one scenario where it was seven to three, and we need eight out of 11. So we might be there. There's still a lot of discussions going on.
Was the, the meeting recorded?
Yes.
Because it's not up on the website.
Okay.
I mean, I think that, I think one of the good news stories is, from this process, is we finally, I think, kind of honed in on an agreed-upon number across the three towns, how much we're trying to come down, which has been in the 800 to 850,000 dollar range. Right? I think there's maybe one or two outliers that like to see more or less. But I think broadly, we're kind of feeling like the 800 to 850,000 dollar range in reductions is a target that we're trying to hit. And there's debates over, you know, we've made a list and there's probably a dozen things on that list that everybody's kind of settled with. And then there's the last few things that we're really wrestling on right now.
What did you all end up with for a health insurance increase this year?
14.
Are you Meyer or GIC?
Yeah, Meyer.
14?
For this coming?
Yeah, 14 for 26.
You guys had a good year.
Yeah, that's good.
Our, our run rates are pretty low, but, so that's what saved us. But it's still, yeah, I've heard, I've heard people looking at it.
When 14% is the good version. When 14% is the good version.
Yeah, I've heard, I, I, I was talking to a colleague who's at 28. So I like, like, oof, okay.
Look at Manchester Essex, 27.
Yeah. And it's, you know, that's sort of what's going on here. I don't think there's a district on, you know, Manchester Essex. There's not a district on the North Shore that's not doing the same exercise right now, because it's health insurance, you know, out of district costs are through the roof. You know, we're all been, you know, bargaining with, you know, our local employee unions. And, you know, we saw what happened, you know, in some of our other neighboring communities. So it's just the perfect storm this year.
And, and I think it's unfortunate, I mean, I think a lot of folks understand this, especially in our district placement, where, you know, it's the state that's basically mandating what those increases are gonna be. And it's nothing, it's not like Masco or any other school district has the ability to go negotiate. It's, here's the increase that we're gonna get this year, you will pay it.
Right. And so that's, that's a million bucks for us going into next year.
I don't know if anyone has anything else.
I don't.
So do you think that you're gonna have, if in the fall, SBA comes back and gives you two thumbs up, not three, because you couldn't do windows and doors, but two thumbs up, when do you think you'll have some clarity of what, what the ask is gonna be looking like at next year's town meeting?
Good question. I don't know.
Um, I'm not holding you to a, like, it's gonna be the X date.
Much specific time.
Softball and track studies, we're trying to do this all in one big ask. So, you know, that's, you know, said the athletic complex study is going on. We're trying to get the permits on turf. So, I mean, there's a lot going on here that, you know, we'd hope to have it by, by December, January, I would guess, but. I mean, I think that's generally what we, what we would try for.
Perfect.
Yeah, the longer the number is known, the longer the education can go on, you know, the.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Want to talk about?
Okay, I'm sorry. One sec. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Lovely.
There we go.
Many tears to shed last night.
We closed it, we weren't.
Literally.
I know, we're shedding them up here, too.
Good night, guys. Thanks very much. All right. Happy stuff. Okay, um, next we'll move to item number eight, which is a review and close of the May 13th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting warrant. Justin, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just a hard copy of what was distributed late last evening. We've made some handful of updates internally, but nothing worth reporting at this time. So we're just gonna run through this page by page. At this point in time, there are 23 articles included on the warrant. Once again, as a reminder to the folks at home, the annual town meeting is upcoming Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, starting at 7:00 PM at the Howe Manning School. So just to go through page by page, I won't read it verbatim, but we'll dig into these a little bit. So Article 1 is the usual and customary article that hear committee reports. Article 2 is to pay bills of prior fiscal years. Based on conversations I had today, there's gonna be a few of those rolling through, but nothing earth-shattering. Article 3, the fiscal 25 snow and ice deficit. We're hopeful that, um.
New action we need to be taking.
So you would take it out, right?
Well, you still have, should keep it in.
Yeah, so we are a tremendously nervous group, and we feel that, and.
Now we're pretty much certain that, you don't, you can't get a number of what we've spent so far?
No, so, so we know, and we're very close to depleting it all. But what we don't know is the weather for the next month. And if, you know, if there's a couple nights where it's gonna dip below freezing and if we have a frost thaw cycle and the roads are slippery and we have to send out salt trucks, that's what we're concerned about.
You're better off just keeping it in there as a placeholder and then passing over if we don't need it.
April Fool's snowstorm and, you know, the late April snowstorms.
We feel like you're tempting fate if you, if you pull it, so.
You're tempting fate talking about it.
Yeah, exactly.
Honestly, someone needs to knock on some wood for how much it's had.
Any transfer from free cash?
It would, it would be free cash.
We're limited to that. There's nothing we have in any of that.
There's nowhere else. I mean, we could like.
They know if there was a.
Yeah, okay. Like FinCom reserve, if you really had to, but. Article 4, approved fiscal year 26 compensation for elected officials. Article 5 is the fiscal 26 omnibus budget. Article 6 is the fiscal 26 public safety operating budget override, where we've broken down into two categories. Funding additional police officers, total compensation of $390,000. And funding additional firefighter paramedics for a total compensation of 585.
Specify the number.
We can. We can add that.
Yeah, and, and just for unclear, this includes both total compensation, including benefits, but also would include equipment, correct?
Correct, yep.
Equipment, uniforms, supplies.
It should be broken down in the, in the town meeting warrant.
We can do three and four.
Is it appropriate to put the impact on the, on the median, you know, what the tax implication is?
And the purpose, I think it'd be an appropriate place to put it.
Let them know what that cost for, I think the number was a $900,000 home, or I forget, $28.
It was like an average 950, but, well, yeah, well, we can break that down.
And we'll break down the cost right down to benefits and salary.
So we deliberately rolled, and we had a conversation about this, concerns about breaking out benefits and the term benefits, because we felt that it was erroneously perceived as like fringe benefits, is like what people oftentimes hear. When actuality, it's, it's health insurance. And so what we were trying to give is.
Well, benefit is compensation, so I, I, I think it should be, because right now it just says total compensation. When I, if I was looking at this, not knowing the process, I'd say it's $390,000 for salaries.
Oh, just for salary?
Yeah, salaries and benefits, but I know it also includes, I assume there's training dollars in here, equipment dollars, uniform dollars.
So maybe just saying, listing out what that total compensation is, I think might be a good.
But then separating out the, the items that Brian just mentioned.
Oh, yeah, like calling out those numbers, but I guess what I'm asking is, does the board feel there's value in calling out that certain, well, I guess the inverse, is you want to see what the actual salary is. Our concern is the listing it as benefits is kind of misleading.
There's also a distinction of what goes in the override question versus what goes in the purpose. I think all of the things that you're talking about can absolutely go in the purpose, but the language of the question is very much dictated by the Prop 2 and 1/2 primer. So I think it's either doing how we showed it on Capitol Budget Saturday of police, fire, benefits total, or fire, salaries and benefits, police salary and benefits total for the question. Everything else that you're talking about for the purpose is how we want it to be, but the format of the question is very legally specific.
The question will say how many firemen and how many police, that'll be added to the question.
We're gonna, we'll take it back and workshop it.
We definitely want that in the, in the question part.
And it's worth mentioning, you all are gonna have an opportunity to see one more draft between now and 10 days from now when we do the.
I think the more everything's broken down, the more chance it's gonna pass. I truly believe that. Especially the salary part, I think, I think the salary part even broken down.
Well, for, for me, even if it just doesn't say total compensation, because this is more than total compensation, I think it should just say total compensation, benefits, equipment, supplies.
I think that's a separate number. Personally, I think all the separate numbers should be in the purpose, so people know exactly what, exactly what they're paying and voting for.
We'll workshop something offline and email it to you.
And if you haven't said, and including the, the actual funding of three police officers.
And four, yeah, three and four.
Which is, which is in here.
The number's gonna get added in.
The other thing that the police chief mentioned at the FinCom meeting was that, you know, the costs of the police academy have doubled.
He does have a training budget for that piece, though.
Has doubled, but I think unlike past years where our former chief was struggling to get new officers into the academy, I think there's a little bit more capacity now, so probably paying for the.
Not to belabor it too, but the, the current, the current compensation for the, for the full-time officers should prove to be an attraction for already, I don't know, full-time offices from other places to transfer here.
Other departments.
So I'm sure that that would be, you know, that we, that would be the first choice that they'd be looking for, was, you know, not to save money on the academy, but that would be a benefit.
So does every, is it, if you had, you found four firefighters to hire, or four, I'll go more police because of the academy, if you found three potential officers, do you have to offer all three the exact same pay, or is it based on experience, if maybe this one has gone to the academy, this one has not?
CBA.
CBA speaks to all of that, the collective bargaining agreement.
Be in the contract.
So you have to pay, you do have to pay them all the same, or don't?
Paying, they'd be like, they'd have to come in first, patrolman, you wouldn't be, oh, you've been on this long here, this, to answer your question, no, they'd come right in.
What if one had already?
Seniority, the whole thing, they'd be at the bottom.
Well, what if one had already gone to the academy, and we don't have to pay to send them, and another one hasn't, that we have to pay to send them? You, you couldn't offer the one that's been to the academy more money because of that?
No.
Those, wait, I'm sorry, we do have different steps for that, though. There's a step if someone comes in and we're sending them to the academy, and then there's another step if they come in, if they've already been academy trained.
So the numbers here are based on people that have not been to the academy, those numbers?
It makes some assumptions, because we can't predict what type of officers are coming in.
Correct.
To apply.
But the reality is, is if new officers were hired in July and they were immediately able to access the academy, they're gonna be at the academy completed pay range before the end of the fiscal year.
Correct.
So we're either paying it now or later.
Right, but we would prefer, if we had a candidate that already went to the academy, we don't have to pay for the academy.
Yeah.
Let them get right to it.
Preferably, yeah, right.
Because you know, you got that, you got all the history in the world on the person.
So moving on to Article Seven, there are some outstanding data points here, so I have sent communications to various committee chairs and their administrative counterparts just confirming some of these numbers. So Article Seven's the fiscal '26 elementary school operating budget override, which it seems is not officially, but resting at about $540,000, and we'll receive a breakdown that we can plug in here in the same fashion that we did on Article Six. Article Eight, the same story, but for Masco, and it sounds like they'll be wrapping things up tomorrow evening, so wish them the best of luck. Article Nine is the fiscal '26 community preservation budget debt service projects and expenses. A huge thanks to Costa and the CPA folks who are diligent about getting this data over to us, so that has been plugged in. Article Ten, fiscal '26 community preservation budget, new projects, which is relative to capital items that we have on a separate sheet. Sarah's away at a conference this week, so we're gonna get together when she returns and plug some of those items in. Article Eleven, just looking at setting the spending limits for revolving funds, nothing changed. What we put in fiscal '26 is what we have for fiscal '25. Article Twelve, the fiscal '26 South Essex Sewage District Enterprise Budget, so just breaking down direct costs and indirect costs. Those actually weren't in the version that you had last night, but that's since been updated. Article Thirteen, fiscal '26 Water Enterprise Budget, we have a couple items outstanding on that that we're going to be plugging in, but that's all, you know, baked into the budget process already. Article Fourteen, accepting the sum for Middleton Electric Light Department. It increased by a few thousand dollars to $260,000 for fiscal year '26, and as always, we thank Meld for their, their partnership, that's huge help. Article Fifteen, transfers to reserve accounts, so this is something that's been hashed out throughout the budget process, where we have a little bit extra free cash this year, or not necessarily extra, but a higher amount than typical due to what we're currently holding in hand. We want to put that away for a rainy day, so the OPEB trust fund is $100,000, Facility Stabilization Fund, $250,000, Stabilization Fund, $50,000, Pension Stabilization Fund, $50,000, and the Capital Stabilization Fund, $100,000, for a total of $550,000.
Can you remind me, I know we talked about this at the March budget hearing, are we still proposing of taking dollars from the Facility Stabilization Fund this year?
Yes.
So we're taking it out and then putting it back in? Well, taking it out and putting some in? What are the, what are the, so we're proposing 250 in, what are we proposing out?
500.
Completing it by half, which was 500, yep. Make a note to get that in there. Article Sixteen, the fiscal '26 capital budget.
Which is where we would spend that money.
Yeah.
If we don't call it out in another.
And as you can see, there's a spot to drop the table in there. Article Seventeen, the Masco Regional Capital Request, so this was touched upon a little bit earlier. We had agreed to divide, it was a million dollar ask last year into two phases, so partially funded last year, but the remainder funded this year, did increase a little bit, so it's not a true million anymore, but the total amount for this phase two between the three communities is 690,000. Middleton's share of that is 230,000 and change, so we do have that in there. Fuller Meadow Roof Construction Debt, largely just a placeholder, we're waiting on exact language from the MSBA, I put in a request for that today. Article Nineteen was the Middleton 300th Committee Appropriation, so we had talked about that a little bit earlier in the agenda today about setting up that committee.
So if, this is a event that's gonna happen in 2028, do we expect, I mean, what expenditures do we think we would have in FY '26 budget that would be needed?
Or is, or is the thought to set it up now because we're not, because we're gonna be tight in the next?
And is that the amount that you think is gonna be needed total?
Yes. So I think the expectation is there's going to be some efforts to fundraise.
Yeah, I get that, yep.
In terms of, they very, they very well may not have any expenses this year, where it's a capital item, it can, the money can just sit there and roll, so that's not as much of a concern. The larger intent here, though, was community awareness, and that's why we pulled it out of the capital plan, and it's a standalone article, is to just let people know.
No, I agree, I just didn't, I, the kind of question was, do we think it was gonna be 15,000 this year, and then two years before the big 300th, it's gonna be additional?
Without knowing what the plans are.
Well, that's why I was, I mean, I get the education.
We need to get, it's seed money. We need to get the committee together, and I think the committee will kind of come to that determination, but it's a starting point. Article Twenty, Charter Review Recommendations, so a huge thank you to that group, they were in at your meeting week before last, so we're just waiting on the official language there, but more than likely, it's gonna point to something on file at the clerk's office. Article Twenty One, the Flood Plain Zoning Bylaw, same situation, awaiting on the official language, they'd come forward two weeks ago, also have language about being on file with the town clerk. Article Twenty Two, so there's a carryover in here referencing a zoning bylaw, and please, nobody panic, it was a carryover from building off the draft from last year. So we are waiting language from legal counsel on the best way to word the disposition of the police station, but there's not going to be a proposed zoning change. My apologies.
It's just a cut and paste issue.
Yep.
Yep.
That freaked anybody out. Article Twenty Three, Conservation Restriction for 105 South Main Street, so same situation, we're waiting on the official language there, and we've been coordinating with Green Belt, as I referenced earlier, Jackie was stomping out there in the wilds of the back half of the golf course. So with that in mind, we're looking at 23 articles in total.
Well, I had mentioned it earlier, but I'll ask here, are we gonna have a standalone article on legal fees?
Yes, so, and thank you for the reminder, so that was something that was discussed at the Capitol Budget Saturday Summit, was carving out the $25,000 request.
Again, for community awareness, pretty much how you put it.
Yep, same thing, community awareness relative to MBTA communities, we had built it into the operating budget initially, there was a request to pull it out and put it in the Capitol Budget, and, but we'll put it on here as a standalone article. 25,000 was the number.
That was the.
So that'll, that'll be Article, well, not 24, but it's gonna bump our total to 24.
Hopefully it can replace fire and ice, not be snow and ice. The Charter Review put, now their committee report is gonna have to be at the beginning of the meeting, correct? No, they can have it.
They're gonna make it as part of this warrant article.
Typically, she would have it with the article.
I was gonna say, well, typically, they would do an update, but where it's complete, they can just do it with the article.
Close it, yeah, do it with, because that'd be too far away. Okay.
Has, has the moderator given any view to her, the guidance that she may be providing as it relates to, you know, the Charter Review recommendations of amendments? Or is she just gonna do the normal, you know, amendments must be in writing, but given that, you know, we've talked about this at our last meeting, given that there's gonna be numerous changes in the charter, albeit the vast majority of them are small in scope, but large in size, or large in number, is she gonna provide any guidance to an expectation at the beginning of the meeting that once we get to Article 20, you know, don't step up right at the beginning and have the question and offer amendments, please provide them earlier?
So the question is that, or the preference, I should say, is that any proposed changes are provided well in advance, because some of these are technical items that could use a review of legal counsel, and you don't really want to be doing that on the floor. With that said, we have had conversations with Madam Moderator, who, who's made it clear relative to her preference, and so I think maybe what we can do is my office, sit down with Barbara and talk about maybe putting out some type of communication relative to that, getting it on the website and pushing it out on social media, just so people better understand the preferred process. And so that, that concludes the warrant for the May 13th Annual Town Meeting.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we close the warrant for the May 13th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Close. Pass unanimously. And are we aware of any citizens petitions or anything like that, or, I mean, other things that can, can, can happen between now and?
On at this time.
Wouldn't they have to be, will we close it? It's too late, right?
Yep.
All right. Next, my notes here. All right, next we're gonna move on to just an update, public update on the Middleton VersaCom, well, sure everyone, well, not sure everyone, but many people may be aware that the board decided to make a, release a statement to this, to all the, all the people involved, all the agencies of all the state, the community, social media, as well as the Globe and the Salem News. I won't, like, recite, read the whole thing, but we were, you know, clearly still had the issue of the grant that was in the air, that was not even after requests, it's really not being told what's going on with that. And then in the meantime, that people probably saw on the news was that the state auditor had declared that the whole entire effort was an unfunded mandate, and there were several communities that were not in the same situation as us, but similar in that, you know, they want to stay involved with this and, you know, see if, see if we can mitigate, if not actually get ourselves excluded. The, the first, so the first item on it was that Middleton can't be held to this law because it is an unfunded mandate, and again, that was a timing to really kick everything off for us. Also, Middleton not being an adjacent community is we don't border any town that has MBTA service, challenging that.
Train station.
Train station.
Mill service.
Sorry, challenging that we don't meet the definition of any of the EO HLC's regulations, and in fact, because of that, for someone from Middleton to get to a train station is a hardship, it would be over eight miles away.
Careful, a whole nother town to a third town.
Yeah, so that, there's, there's that aspect of, which we, you know, which we were, we added that in this, and that the town, again, was awarded a sizable grant that was conditional upon this compliance, and that if the statute can't apply to the town, then we request this injunction to be able to free up our access to those and any other grant funds. So here we are, to this point, we haven't expended, you know, as far as any, you know, funds or anything like that, that, I mean, minimal.
A small amount.
A small amount. So, so.
So, yeah, if you wanna.
I was gonna say, so for the edification of folks at home, because I've, I've seen some comments on social media, and some folks have asked me the question of rattling off a whole slew of things that people believe are unfunded mandates. So under the law that determines what is an unfunded state mandate, at the state auditor's office, this was back in the 1980s, the legislature passed a law that created an office within the office of the state auditor, that is the determinant entity of determining when there is an unfunded state mandate. Many times we've all said, hey, look, the state's dropped this on the town of Middleton or the town of wherever, we believe that's an unfunded state mandate. It doesn't become. It doesn't become determined to be an unfunded state mandate until the auditor's office, and specifically the unit within the auditor's office, declares something an unfunded state mandate. And usually what happens at that point is either the legislature or the administration determines how they mitigate the issue that is now deemed to be an unfunded mandate. So I want to call out and thank specifically the several towns that actually had made that request. Marshfield, I think, was the town that was leading the, was it Marshfield?
Rentham.
Rentham, sorry. Rentham that was leading the charge on that for that point. But more specifically, I want to call out the state auditor and her office's decision to quickly review and come back with, I thought was a very clear and concise example of why they believed it is an unfunded state mandate. And this board, I know we discussed this previously in an executive session, but we're talking about it here publicly. We reviewed both the language that the state auditor had declared and where other communities that were similarly aligned as us and made the decision of entering into litigation with, with the Commonwealth specifically around the door that was opened by the state auditor's office on unfunded state mandates. We're a little bit different than maybe a Marshfield or a Rentham or other town in that we also, at the same time, had a very clear grant that had been provided to the town in dollars that were provided specifically to improve infrastructure of a state roadway that was needed because of a affordable housing project. And then lastly, to your point, Rick, if you-- good job of showing this in a, in a visual. We are the one island in the sea of adjacent communities to commuter rail service, to rail service. We are the only one. So that's now seated in the hands of the courts through the case that we have filed. I know that the state has requested that they all be sent to a certain court because they were, we filed, I believe, in Salem District Court, Salem Superior Court. Rentham filed in Norfolk. And they've all been pulled into Norfolk Superior, I guess. So, so wheels are moving on this. We have a lot more work to do. Our council has a lot more work to do. But again, I want to give a big thank you to Rentham and Diana DiZoglio, the auditor, for clearly eliminating what in fact is an unfunded state mandate. You know, this isn't a case of the town of Middleton or the town of anywhere else wants to make a change in their zoning to effectuate housing increase and housing stock increase. This is the state mandating for a community like Middleton or, or any other community that, I guess, has been decided based on your closeness to a commuter rail station and the ability to withhold funds that for us, we were awarded $2 million in funds to assist with infrastructure improvements around a project that is going to increase significantly affordable housing here in Middleton. So, you know, that's where we stand on that. The wheels of, of justice, so to speak, move slowly. We all saw when the town of Milton moved forward with their case that went to the Superior Court. That was months and months and months. I would expect this will be a similarly timed process. But a big thank you to Justin and your team for working with our town council, Jay Talaman and his team, which incidentally are also representing several other towns that are similarly entered into a similar lawsuit. How many communities are there total?
Forty.
Which helps us in that initial--
I don't know offhand, but I do know they are, they're basically-- MTTC is representing Rentham.
Yep.
So this came from our legal counsel.
Yeah. So--
And up to point 02, you know, I, well, this is probably for the attorneys to do in court. But, you know, a request for a grant and a, and an award letter that came well before we were non-compliant. It's just a--
Well, in an award that is providing improvements onto a roadway that's operated and owned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that would be at the gateway of a affordable housing project that due to Chapter 40B, which has been determined isn't an unfunded mandate by a previous state auditor, but still is a Program 40B that towns like Middleton have little to no control over. So an affordable housing project is occurring that the state recognized the need for and provided 2 million for us. This wasn't $2 million to improve a park or $2 million to, you know, purchase a new DPW piece of equipment. This is $2 million specifically to improve a state roadway that is in front of an affordable housing project where Middleton, and I would argue Middleton is probably going to see more affordable housing capability through that project than they would ever, ever see if a MBTA zoning project ever occurred in Middleton. So let's hope the Norfolk Superior Court sees things that I think the way that the auditor has seen it in her team, but also our council as well.
I do not.
And of course, as things, you know, come about, come abreast, we'll, we'll obviously keep the town informed.
And, and thank you, Justin Farr, the social media updates that you've done and educated folks. And I know it's actually exciting to see the newspaper here this evening. It's not often that we, we get the newspaper. So thank you for coming. But I recommend we continue to provide whatever update we receive in a timely manner, both social media and with news outlets and others.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Okay. If nothing else, we'll go to item number 10. Surplus town property regroup and discussion. And looking at the public input on, talking about the fire station on Four Lake Street and the public input that, that we've received. And that's out there. If you want to, I don't know which one of you wants to take that.
Sure, I'll, I'll take it. And my apologies, Jackie was just pointing out that it's 7:20 on the dot. And that is--
We're on time.
We called that on the agenda and that never happens. So report, report that.
Weirdly excited by it.
I helped get you back on.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. Great job, Ryan.
Little things were ahead until you-- I got him on time. He's back in the calendar.
Thank you. Nailed it. And so, so this is the second part of our ongoing series to address surplus property in town, a lot of which is, is coming forth with the impending opening of the new public safety facility and Town Hall slash Council on Aging up the road. And so to give people a quick update, what we've been doing is committing at one select board meeting, or one at a time per night, a specific property. So last meeting, it was the police station. This meeting, it is the fire station at Four Lake Street. And we are joined this evening by Chief Lacoste. Chief, I don't know if you'd like to join us at the table or you can sit back there as well. Either way, why not? And so what we're trying to do is take a hard look at a community, at, as a community, at what we'd like to do with these properties. We don't want to make any assumptions. And as we've said in previous meetings, some of these properties are a little easier than others. So the police station, not the heaviest lift in terms of determining what to do with that. But we're ramping up a little bit. So the fire station, we've heard a variety of opinions. We pushed it out on social media and received some feedback there. I'm sure some of your constituents have reached out to you individually and offered various ideas. We do know and anticipate the fire department to be out of that building sometime early next year. And I think there are some unique elements of that property relative to its septic, relative to its proximity to the library. We're actually, we're actually, Chair Baraski, if you'd like to join us at the table as well, why not? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. And just trying to identify potential opportunities relative to the library. There's something there. I know some folks had offered that they'd like to potentially cease some, some type of commercial redevelopment there. But you're really kind of restricted in terms of the parking, as well as the fact that it's, the septic is, is tied into the library. And so with that, I think I've teed it up if anybody would like to take it from there.
I, I think from the materials that are in the packet, and it is clear that selling this property would be very problematic, both in, you know, in terms of septic, in terms of title, in terms of zoning compliance.
Parking, it would have a traumatic, negative effect on parking at the library facility right now.
So for those reasons, you know, I, I think, you know, this is one that, you know, we do not, the town does not sell. And the question would be, what could we possibly do with the building or the land? And where does the money come from to do that?
I would prefer to see it repurposed, whether, and I'm not sure I agree so much that it couldn't be sold. But even if we kept it, I don't know, maybe, and I talked to Ann, maybe the historical society moves over there and maybe the society could sell the other building they have. It's definitely a more visible location for them. I'm not an advocate of tearing the building down. I don't know that the library's going to need more parking. With a lot of the programs they have now, we're going to move to the new facility, the ones that are most well-attended, rather than the day-to-day library use. But I, I'm not convinced that the way to invigorate the downtown center is to tear that down. I think in an attempt to invigorate that area, repurposing it might make more sense. And the cost to, to tear it down may be as much as the cost to do some renovations.
I, I don't know. I don't know that that's, that would be entirely true. This, it's been known for a lot of years and that there are some structural deficiencies in there. And once you get into structural deficiencies, I am not an engineer, but once you get into that, it's very hard to recoup. The last thing we want to do, and this is just my opinion, is to try to sell this. If we were to get a buyer, and then we have all these rabbit holes that we have to go down because we end up losing the sale because of the inefficiencies. Or we sit on it for five, six, seven, eight years because we can't find an adequate buyer. The septic for the library is part of the septic for the fire. Right there, where, and this lot could not host, I don't believe, host its own septic. Otherwise, the town would have done that years ago. To me, it makes sense. It's so close to the library. And again, that's just my opinion, for financial reasons, for the fact that it should really just become part of the land of the library, whether it be extra parking, whether it be green space, whether it be whatever, whatever creativity. We haven't obviously gotten that far. But I, I'm not an advocate for putting this on the market. We would be pulling our hair out.
Yeah. Relative, sorry, but regardless of the outcome of the fire department, I like the idea. But more appropriately, I see historical center at the old senior center on Maple Street.
Me too.
If that would have been, I don't know, I don't know how feasible that is, but I think of that right away.
I do too, Rick.
I, I spent some time thinking about this actually last night when I was looking at both the visuals and the maps here. So it's, all the points that you made are clear. If, I, I think it's pretty clear selling this property or transferring this property would have to an entity other than something owned by the town of Middleton would be problematic. It is our second means of parking lot access. A significant portion of the parking that is used right now by patrons of the library is actually on the footprint of this property. Now, some of the parking is used by fire personnel when they're on duty. However, looking just north, actually west, I always do this. Looking just west of the property, there's a building that has, for all intents and purposes, been vacant for many, many years in Middleton Center. One of the reasons for the vacancy of that property is it's a very small lot, very small parking. It's a, it's a weird exit from that street that comes out. It narrows down and then opens it up again when that roadway comes out to the intersection of North Main Street across from Central Street. I think there's an opportunity for this building to be taken down, for green space to be expanded, for that roadway to possibly be repositioned. And if there was going to be any acquisition, it could be possibly the roadway moving and an acquisition of part of where the roadway is now, possibly by the building that's next door that would make that building maybe a bit more attractive for somebody that wants to either update, renovate, or turn that into something other than a vacant building, which is basically what it's been for a long period of time, occasionally a small number of individuals. Secondly, we all agree there's a parking issue with the library right now. I think you'd probably agree with me, Mark. I mean, when we have, I assume that's where we're going to have the reading of the warrant meeting? Get there early because parking will, will be difficult there.
It's at the school.
No, we're here.
Oh, we're here? We're not over there?
My apologies.
Okay. I know in the past, we were usually over there. Now granted, there's going to be a lot of events that happen at the library that will move to the new municipal complex. But what I've heard clearly from Loretta and her staff, and Mark, you can probably agree with this, is there's been a pent-up amount of potential programs that her and her staff haven't been able to provide because the library has, for all intents and purposes, been our sole location for a lot of the meetings, community groups, not-for-profits and others that have been meeting that may now be at our new municipal complex, which will give an opportunity here. I harken back when the Lois Lane building was acquired by the town. And there was a lot of debate, it was my first year on this board, of, you know, why should we do that? You know, what is it really going to matter? We're going to tear it down and make it a lawn? I don't think there's probably anybody in town, including those that yelled at me when I voted for the town meeting, that it was the right thing to do. I mean, that library is, for all intents and purposes, has served as the center of our town and the centerpiece of our town. No intention differently to the fire department that was there. But I think bringing that piece back into that footprint makes sense. It's going to increase some parking. Now, I know we've talked about the ability of looking at the structural integrity of what would be the front foundation wall. If that would able to remain in such a way that would allow parking to be what is now where the underside parking, the old DPW garage would be, which would further expand both outdoor parking at the library, but also possibly expand the opportunity for the library to do some outside programs with youth, children and otherwise. So, and lastly, you know, we for the last probably decade on this board have continued to defer maintenance on that building. I know the chief, you've done a lot and Tom did a lot and Frank did a lot within a very small budget. I mean, but it wasn't that long ago that we put a lot of money into that concrete floor because it was starting to, to fail. And it was a Band-Aid. It wasn't an overall fix. My concern is that if we ever sold or transferred or try to utilize otherwise, we're going to be putting a lot of money into something that is not an appetite to do. Yeah, there's history there. It's our old DPW, our original fire station. But there's a jewel being built further down the road that has kind of set this town into the future for decades and generations. I think we have to move on from this. And my recommendation is we determine a process that allows us to, in the most financially feasible manner, expand parking, green space, and potentially looking at that intersection and that roadway. Now, we may not be able to do that for financial reasons, but I think that's more important to look at in a way that will actually improve the current facility of the library and the parking that's there.
I don't, I don't think you can compare this to when we did the Lois Lane property. That was right on, right on the street. I, I agree that was a great thing that we did and it was the right thing to do. I, I don't think that this is the same situation. I don't think that this is the same situation. We've been asking the people of Middleton for a lot of money, we have overrides coming. I think repurposing this and, and using it rather than tearing it down with the situation financially we're in, to me, makes more sense.
Well, you know, we'd have to identify how much money it would take to.
The cost to cure.
To, you know, to fix up the building structurally and the envelope, and then how much money it would cost to renovate the interior for whatever purpose we're going to use it for. What if, and that could be a substantial amount of money. Right now, we don't know what that is. And, you know, and if we're going to keep it and repurpose it, whatever amount of money it would take, we would have to ask the voters for.
Right, unless we sold it. And we wouldn't have to sell it, we could always maybe move the lot line and keep some of that extra parking for the library that already exists.
You would be turning this into such a wildly non-conforming lot, and where would they put their septic? I mean, if we sold this, we're surely not, I, I would never sell this property with access to our.
Right, they would have to put their own.
So where is the septic going to go? I mean, i- if you look at the map right now and you look at the back part, that's the only area that the septic could go. It's not large enough in front to put a septic. So now, we're giving up significant parking in an area in back for a septic.
A septic can go underpark.
No, I know it can, but, well, you know how much more that's going to cost to do. So, we're going to have to sell this with, the buyer's going to have to actually have to put a new septic in. What's the value of that property going to be if we're carving off, if you, if you took the parking that's to the right of the, the walkway that intersects the main parking lot, and you, think about the parking spaces that we have now that the library utilizes, that the, that is actually part of the fire department's footprint, which is probably, I'm looking here.
It would go straight back from the building.
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven and a half, call it seven and a half, eight spots. Even if you took that area and you put it back to the back corner, we are now, we'd also have, I would recommend, we sell it with a, an easement that we continue to have access to drive across the back. So, how much more are we devaluing the property in such a way to have an easement, a need for a new septic, a smaller lot, a wildly non-conforming, and then, you know, leave it in the hands of the zoning board of appeals to do something that is aligned with the architecture of what we have in the center of our, of our town.
Mr. Chair, would you like to solicit input from the audience?
I sure would. Anyone here has anything they'd like to, go ahead.
Jeff did present me with his idea of moving the museum. I talked to the chief for a while, I talked to some museum specialists about what that would entail, you know, given the artifacts that we do have. Unfortunately, the fire station would have to be, it would cost billions. You know, we, we have to have a very specialized air system, humidity system. It's not nearly ADA compliant, not even close. There's no parking. You know, it would be really extremely cost prohibitive to put any kind of artifacts in there and have any sense of people coming through it. So, I think that's pretty off the, off the board for us. We're still with your idea, Rick, which was my original idea, of moving it down to Town Hall to try to save that building. Because the tramp house is behind there too, it'd be a nice historical campus.
It doesn't have its financial hurdles either, but.
It does have its financial hurdles, but that building we have now currently has its financial gains to the town. So, you know, we should, when we first built it, you know, we do, we, there was caveats that we are sharing the parking with the library now, and the town, and the septic system, and the electricity, and, you know, a lot of things we do share. But, you know, we operate on a $300 budget every year, so, you know, it's really tough to, to work out of that building. So, we're happy to give it up to try to save the other building. So, that's our plan, that's our kind of approach.
Thank you.
But we did, we did discuss Jeff's plan too.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Can I go to, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you sure? Well, what if mine overlaps yours?
So, yeah, so basically, you know, I think it's safe to say that I know that building quite well. It's been my second home for a number of years. I grew up on that street, so I've been by that area quite often. I can tell you that the building is 70-plus years old, and it would cost, in my opinion, it would cost too much money to bring it up to where it needs to be if it was repurposed for historical society or whatever. So, I think another problem is just a lack of parking. Nothing against the library, we've been fantastic neighbors over the years, and I'll definitely miss them when we move to our new home, but I can tell you at their peak activities, it's a constant struggle with, with parking. So, I think that, in my opinion, it makes sense to just tear the building down and use that space for green space, parking, whatever, but to, to keep that building up, you know, to keep it operational, to me, just doesn't make sense.
From the viewpoint of historical commission, it doesn't have any historical value to the town.
Thank you for inviting me to speak as the chair of the library trustees, as well as a resident. I have a lot of opinions too, and I'm kind of torn, but I think I addressed many of these things. I'd like to just say from a, sort of, selling the property, I think, I, I think, first of all, as a big picture, we're, it's the center of town, right? I think turning that into a private or a business, someone buys that, they're going to need to then create a business that needs to produce a large enough profit to pay for it. That's going to create traffic, parking, and we've already got a struggle. I haven't heard anybody bring this up, but that's a cut-through. I think several years ago, we put in a, a raised area and a crosswalk and a stop sign that's ignored every day, and there are regularly kids crossing there that, that are, nobody's been hit yet, thankfully, but it's a dangerous situation. So, while I appreciate selling property to, to reduce our tax costs, I think, I think that may be a bad idea. The, it has been the community center forever now, right? But I think you're right, we're building a, a new one of those, and some of the bigger projects, bigger programs are going to be held down there. So, the library collectively, unanimously, surprisingly, agreed that we'd like to, you know, be really involved with this decision. So, we're, we're, we'd like to open up that dialogue and, and still be a part of this, this conversation. I do think, well, a couple of other things. Historical society and, and Loretta has brought to our attention that there's a lot of things being stored in our attic at the library that probably could be stored more safely or effectively, or in a climate-controlled, better, better environment. So, there's some of those things to keep in mind. One thought that I had, big picture, and I'm not saying there's an appetite for this in town right now, especially given the, the cost of the, the new project, but years and years down the road, if we're looking at the viability of the building and the property itself, if we take a, a landscape architect's view of it, you know, overhead view, and look at the property, including the historical society, and look at another large project, right, that, again, I'm not trying to spend our money at all, I don't like tax bill as it is. Right, right. But if we think about this in the long term and, and create something that is a, is a, is a bigger, incorporates all of that area for outdoor classrooms, an amphitheater, whatever that looks like, and, and then incorporate, and I hadn't thought of the, the old Town Hall for the historical society, but one thing I had was, it certainly goes hand-in-hand with the library to have a historical society in, in the same building or at least an adjacent building. So, maybe it's a, a bigger project for, for 10 years down the road, but at some point, maybe they're combined and they're side-by-side, and I, I like your idea of maybe, maybe you trim that back and change that intersection and allow more parking for the brick building or whatever that is. But, maybe having a bigger picture, look at that and see what that would cost and, and see if it's viable, see if it's something that the town has an appetite for, rather than just tearing it down or, I'm not saying we, we use that building, but you're parking one or two fire trucks inside right now, so it's holding two fire trucks, it's.
An ambulance.
Okay, relatively structurally sound, right? So, I think, I don't think we need to tear it down right now. If you, if you tear the top down and that's a parking lot for now, okay, but I think, I think we should really look at this in a bigger, all-encompassing, with that whole property and what we can do, what would, what would look good, what's going to be really fun for the town to, you're coming through, it looks great coming through now, but could we do something else that's even better? And, and not quickly just sell or get rid of it or turn it into a parking lot, I think it's, it's a great space to, that we could do a lot with. So, I think that's, that's all my points. And I'm open to other questions and, and willing to come.
I agree, just not, right. I just don't want to see, just to come in with bulldozers and, without putting a lot of thought in repurposing it, that, that's, that's my point, just here. But just for the, for the people watching, just to clarify, some of that Ann said, when she refers to Old Town, and Mark refers to Old Town Hall, probably a lot of people think you're referring to the current Town Hall.
Right, sorry.
Forty-eight South Main, it's Maple.
Right, that's what I want to explain, to, to, a lot of people don't know that, when you, when you're talking about moving the historical society to Old Town Hall, Old, Old Town Hall is where the senior center is now.
The older Town Hall.
Right, the, the Town Hall with, where, where Justin works, that's New Town Hall right now, soon to be an Old Town Hall, but that's New Town Hall, because I'm sure a lot of people are thinking, when that was brought up, that'd be a great idea to move the historical society across the street to the current Town Hall, which I think would be a great idea, but I'd, I'd rather see it there. I, I'm a big advocate of saving that building, but I, I think a lot of people, when they hear the old, like, that's the old fire station, the Old Town Hall isn't Town Hall, it's, it's the, it's the current senior center. I, I'm sure there's people watching that don't realize that.
That was a good clarification, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I would say, if I can offer in terms of immediate next steps, I do have that meeting next week with a structural engineer, where chief and I will go through the building and just on an early level, try to give us an idea of what we're looking at. I'll have them put a proposal together, and we can review it probably, hopefully, your April 1st meeting, or if not, the one after.
And longer term is, we're trying to figure out how the property would be repurposed. I'd really like to take us, take a look at what could potentially occur at the entrance of Lake Street there. It, it does narrow down significantly. You know, if, for example, part of where you park your equipment, when it's out in front of the door, some of it is actually on the street.
Hundred percent.
Where you park every day is on the street. We haven't ticketed you yet, but, but we could make some revenue on that. So, I, and again, I, I know that as the Affordable Housing Trust has been looking at properties around town that have continued to be either underutilized or vacant or others, our roads keep coming to that building that's next door, that, I know several years ago at town meeting, there was an effort to rezone many of the lots there that was pulled at the last minute. You know, I, I would like to also keep that in the process, specifically also with what our town planner is doing on looking at North Main Street overall. If there's an opportunity now that there's not going to be fire trucks coming in and out of there all the time, improving that intersection, and is there an opportunity that some of this land may be able to be more supportive of something, more effectively utilizing what has been basically a vacant building for a decade plus?
Excuse me, Brian, you're talking about the, the brick building on the corner? It's called Muzzy Chuck Block?
Yeah, Muzzy Chuck Block.
Okay, just make sure I'm, I'm on the same page, thank you.
Took a townie to give it a name.
We're going to talk old school, yeah. There is a small block at the top, top of the brick.
That's right.
Yeah, it does say that, yeah.
Yeah.
So, as an additional action item, I'm also going to reach out to MassDOT, because if I, typically coming off an intersection, they own a certain amount of feet going out, and it's going to require coordination with them, and MassDOT moves at the speed of MassDOT. So, I think the sooner we get to them, the better on that.
Agreed. And there, God, everyone talk about grants because grants are like verboten right now, but I know we received Mass Office of Development funding when we were looking at scenarios for Memorial Hall, but are there any opportunities for this building?
So, the, the door to that is presently closed through Mass Development relative to the MBTA issue, but we can still take a look at it and.
Mass Development has been.
That was on the list.
It was on the, okay.
But, we'll take a look and see if maybe there's somebody that's interested in taking a look. And then, in a broader sense, just for upcoming meetings, Council on Aging Building, the Old Town Hall, or the oldest Town Hall at 38 Maple Street, will be reviewed at your April 1st meeting, and so we'll go ahead and get those flyers out on social media and start pushing it out there and seeing if people have an opinion.
So, it's, in deciding what to do with this, I mean, there is, if we repurpose it, there is a cost. You know, where's that money going to come from? If, you know, the building, the fire department moves out and, you know, it's, it's vacant for three years while we're trying to decide, you know, find the right.
We can't do that.
What's the cost? The cost, you know, the insurance costs on vacant buildings are sky-high, you know? And if, you know, there's nobody, and they still have to do some, you know, minimal work, you know, so that it doesn't collapse. So, there's the cost to, to keeping it. And then, you know, if we take it down, there's a cost, you know, to that. And you, we have to kind of keep in mind what all these costs are in, in making a decision, and what the ultimate property, you know, looks like, and what makes more sense? Because if it's going to take, you know, three or $4 million to repurpose that building, who wants to ask the, the town, the taxpayers for that money? If we do something else with it, is there another source of funding so that we don't have to ask the taxpayers for?
Good questions.
And I, I also want, once we reach the conclusion of reviewing all of these facilities, you know, we were very clear on the police facility that that should be sold, and we're moving forward at town meeting to ask for that approval. I think we're pretty clear that this property shouldn't be sold, at least the majority of this board is clear that it shouldn't be so, sold. So, we've got two more parcels that we have to make some determination on, and then I guess another one, which is on School Street, that was kind of added into the mix there, which we've talked about on and off for north of a decade now. We also have to prioritize what the costs are going to be to both mothball these buildings, to potentially repurpose these buildings. If the decision is, and town meeting approves to tear down buildings, there's, I mean, I just look at the cost that we got originally to tear down the building on School Street, which was substantial. Tearing this building would not be cheap. It's not going to cost what it cost us to take down the old Lowest Lane building, that's for sure. So, I think we also have to prioritize the very limited budget. I mean, we spent the better part of the beginning of this meeting talking about how difficult the budget process is, and how voters are getting tired of asking, being asked for additional dollars. The budget portion ended with Masco leaving, telling us that next May, they're coming in with a ginormous project override request. That is probably going to happen at the same time that we're starting to make some decisions on this building at town meeting, Memorial Hall at town meeting, and the old Town Hall. And even if the decision is to keep all three of those, but to do something different, it's significant budget ramifications. And while we maybe didn't talk about this when we asked the voters for tens of millions of dollars for a new municipal project, I don't think the voters had an expectation that we were going to come in with all new projects for the existing buildings. I, I may be wrong on that, but, but it doesn't mean to throw the baby out with the bathwater, let's sell them all and then regret it 25 years from now. So, I think we have to be methodical, but also be very clear that voters and taxpayers are going to say enough if we come in and ask for significant dollars other than, and I don't want to see two big buildings in our center of town stay vacant for a long period of time. It's, we obviously didn't offer that to the taxpayers and the townspeople.
Yeah, just, the, the Lowest Lane property was purchased, demolished, and the area. Yeah, just, the Lowest Lane property was purchased, demolished, and the area reconstructed with CPA funds to create open space. One avenue is, you know, to knock the fire station down, recreate, you know, repurpose, you know, the land for, you know, open spaces, you know, some parking, you know, et cetera, and it could be done as an open space project under CPA. So, the costs are not additional costs to the taxpayers.
And there's one more fiscal year remaining on the portion of open space dollars that are utilized for the library?
Yeah, historic preservation.
It's only historic, okay. What there was, was there any open space dollars that were used other than for what was utilized for the Lowest Lane Building?
Not around the library.
And so, right now, it's about, what, 42, 45,000 a year in open space dollars that are available, new dollars?
About, about that, that's the 10, you know, the 10%, the yearly 10%, but, you know, with, you know, like, for FY '26, there's $187,000 going to the library debt service. FY '27 is the last year, after that, that goes, that expense goes away.
Well, it's, the, the revenue sits in the fund.
Sits in, in the fund. So, to accomplish the demolition and repurposing of that lot is within the financial ability of the CPA as it stands, you know, now.
And we own it, so you don't have to buy it.
Correct. You know, that, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that that is the thing that we do, but when we're, you know, weighing what can be done and what the costs are and how to pay for it, that's sort of a clear path.
Very clear to me.
Well, we've got a ways to go with this, this won't be decided this fiscal year.
I mean, the earliest, the earliest we'd be making any decision on this would be the following May.
Maybe you can let the town vote on it.
All right, I don't have any updates and announcements out of jumping out at me unless anybody else does.
I have a few items. So, Jackie and I have been working together to assemble a public engagement schedule, and thank you to Jackie for compiling it here. So, with the vote to close the warrant this evening is kind of kicking things off. We have a whole host of different things planned for veterans groups, things at the council on aging. Jackie and I will even be posting up at the transfer station one Sunday in April to give people an opportunity to ask us questions about the budget. Any opportunity there is for us to talk to Middleton residents, we're going to put ourselves out there and really kind of empty the tanks on this one. So, we'll be distributing this publicly sometime in the next week, just to give people an idea about where we're going to be in town and when, and if they have any questions, they just approach us.
Yeah, and if you don't mind, I'll come with you in as many of those events as I can.
Perfect, thank you. And then, anyone else as well, once we distribute? If you see something that you'd like to attend, we'd love to have you, so, thank you.
Anything else? Nothing? All right. With that...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 38, section 21A 3, and section 21A 2, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining negotiation with non-personnel, and we will not be returning to open session.
So, go.
Thanks, Mark.
Roll call vote, Deb.
I'll second that.
I always want to.
Brian?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am, yes.
All right, we will not be returned to open session.